Let the record reflect, the board came out of closed session and adjourned at 6:09 PM. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the meeting room, the board meeting room on the north wall. The purpose of this meeting is to receive an update regarding the strategic plan and suspension data. So we're going to do roll call here in just one second. Roll call, please.
Fay.
Here.
Gotting.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon.
Snow.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas. Wayne. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Scanlon.
Okay, and Mr. Scanlon is here.
Seven present.
So he just stepped away for a moment. At this time, I would entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Snow, who informed me that he's running a little late from work, and Mr. Vargas, who just got married on Saturday.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wayne and second by Mrs. Fay. Roll call, please.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon. Underwood.
Aye.
Wayne. Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotting.
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon and second by Ms. Williams. Are there any abstentions? I think it's report C.
It's report C. It's mine.
Is that right, from Ms. Underwood and Mr. Wayne?
Yes. I'll be abstaining from what, I'm not sure what the item number is. I can't, my computer is going really slow. D5, thank you.
Okay. So, motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Ms. Williams, to approve the consent agenda that is before us with Mr. Wayne and Mrs. Underwood abstaining from D5. Claim, School District of Omaha, report C. Roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Wayne. Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotting.
Aye.
Six aye.
Did we have five aye on D5? One, two. So it must be seven aye. Or no, six aye and one, not voting, sorry. Okay, motion carries. All right, with that, we're going to move to the strategic plan update. I'm not sure who's going to lead us off. Is it Mr. Lawaroo or Mr. Evans?
I'd be happy to say a couple of them.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. We're happy to have the opportunity to provide some updates. I know I had shared in a previous email with the board that we don't have our data yet for all the NISA, NISA scores, which impacts all of our achievement tracking. We're going to have that, I think Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie would say, probably by September, October. We should have all of that finalized, although we'll have some rough numbers, maybe even in August, but today we do not. So it's kind of an incomplete report without all the data, but that's coming. And I would hope that we can do a more complete piece in the fall with the data. And maybe even a consideration might be to have even a community forum at some juncture, if that's something the board would be interested in, where we walk through all the strategies with our community and ask for feedback from our community. So I just wanted to kind of preface that. We recognize we don't have everything here, but we wanted to at least provide some updating and some of the information that we do have. And I know we've got some principals that are here today, some school representatives that are willing to share on some of the specific strategies that are being implemented at schools. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lawaroo and Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie.
Good evening and welcome on. Thanks for attending. I believe the first order of operations is a report from Mr. Joftis on our Critical Friends visit.
I got to say hello to a few of you, but not all of you, so it's a pleasure, as always, being back. This, this report is the third and final report from our Critical Friend visit. So as most of you know, we've been, Cross and Joftis has been working with the district since, actually before the strategic plan, we did, worked with the needs assessment, helped facilitate the creation of the strategic plan. And then as part of our contract with you, the board, we were asked to come back three times and report to you on the implementation of the strategic plan. So this was the third and final. My, I came to visit April 26th and 27th of 2016. Just as a reminder, my visit entails reviewing data that the district collects and provides for me, and then a number of focus groups and interviews. And it includes key stakeholders from the community and school district. I can go into a little bit more detail on that if there's, if there's interest. So if it's okay, I'll just go ahead and provide a overview of the findings and recommendations from this final visit in April. My overarching finding was that the district was continuing its active and aggressive implementation of the strategic plan and had addressed or was in the process of addressing the recommendations that I had provided from my previous visit, which was from 2015, January 2015. In that, in that second visit, I had recommendations in four areas. The first one was that the superintendent and staff continue to really work to engage you, the board, more actively and to, especially around key initiatives of particular expertise of each of, of each of the board members. And then the other three recommendations were in the areas of coaching and professional development, work groups, and teacher and principal engagement. So now I'll report on the findings from this visit. The first one had to do with the school board. So my first finding had to do with the fact that the school board continues to develop structures and processes to improve governance. And I can go into more details. I'm just going to kind of provide an overview for the time being, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer that. Number two was that coaching and professional development had, had improved and was beginning to improve. There's still some work to do, as I'll point out in the recommendations, but principals and teachers certainly have greater clarity about the purpose and structure of the principal coaching visits, and both teachers and principals are reporting greater perceived value with those, with those visits. The next finding has to do with work groups. Those have been reduced from four to three in number, and those three remain very active and really help to break down some of the silos across the district in terms of getting staff from different departments, working together, solving problems, and implementing key action steps from the strategic plan. The next finding has to do with teacher and principal engagement, and I'll, I'll give some less positive findings in a moment, but the positive findings are related to much greater participation among teachers and principal selection. There's been a creation of a principal superintendent advisory board, and there's feedback provided on all principal, on all principal meetings. Also, I want to point out, the work of the executive directors is continuing to evolve and we believe is a model for the country, and that's a huge lever and a great strategy for, for engaging principals as well. So those are kind of the top-tier findings. Some of the next-tier findings is, as you all know, the district has, continues to undergo a lot of, a lot of change. So notably, four senior administrator positions since, had been filled since I had last been here. That includes communications, human resources, finances, sorry, finance, and the executive director of OSERS. Technology upgrades continue quickly across the district, and the district is, is rolling out the state's first-ever virtual school. The stat process, which I'll again say more about in a moment, but those have recently undergone sort of a reset, as the term that's been used in the district, where there's been an opportunity for staff and principals to provide feedback to staff and to the contractor around how to, how that process can be improved upon. And that had been in its early stages when I was here in, in April. There's been a lot of work around the principal pipeline, and that's off to a very strong start and has received a lot of very favorable feedback from district leaders and principals as well. So there's now structures in place to predict principal vacancies and plan for succession, and there's a whole pool, a whole process for creating a deeper pool of principal candidates. And the district has also continued to develop the launch program, which is, which is getting a lot of positive, positive attention. School construction and renovation, as you all know, has kept everyone extremely busy. This is, again, due to the passage of the $421 million bond. Everything appears to be on schedule and on budget. It's being overseen, as you know, by a very strong contractor and a citizens' budget oversight committee, which I had the opportunity to attend when I was here. Another secondary benefit has been the really positive work on the economic inclusion program. And that's, that's, again, a potential national model, we believe. And lastly, on, on the positive findings are the announcement by the Sherwood Foundation to fund social workers in all of the district's highest need schools for this upcoming year, which is a really, really positive development. So in addition to those findings, I did note that some of the challenges that any implementation processes would be expected to, would be expected to have. First and foremost, the number-one finding, I would say, the one, number-one challenge, I would say, is the low morale of principals. I got a chance to meet with two different groups of principals, and there was a lot of angst, quite frankly. A lot of it has to do with the fact that they expressed the fact that a lot of, a lot of this work that I've been summarizing, they believe that they're not, haven't had as opportunity to be as, to be, have as much say over how those things get rolled out. They use phrases like "things are happening to them" and not "with or for them." There were also phrases or words used like anger, loss of hope, or being overwhelmed. So this is definitely an area where, where I'm encouraging some, quite a bit of extra attention going forward. Related to the issue of morale is that of communication, and most stakeholders that I talked to cited challenges with both internal and external communication as the district's greatest challenge. And do note that this was right in the period of time where the former, there was a change in the director of communications position. But just a key point to note was that several of the groups that I talked to cited the rollout of the increase in the instructional minutes as a, as a prime example of the district's challenge in terms of communicating effectively with all the, with the stakeholders. I noted at school stat in my previous positive findings that, as I mentioned, that that, when I was here, that had, was undergoing a reset by the district. That was also a source of great angst among the principals, and I'm sure as Mr. Evans will point out, when I'm done, that has actually now been eliminated, which I didn't necessarily recommend, but I think it was probably a positive, positive step moving forward. Another finding, this is neither positive nor negative, although there is a risk involved. As you know, there's going to be a new board composition next year, and so our hope, our recommend, our hope is that the board will continue to focus on the strategic plan, as it has now for the last three, four years, which has been really, really impressive. Just a couple other points before I get into recommendations. That these really focus on the sort of, the relationship between the curriculum, the CIA Department, Curriculum Instruction Assessment, and the executive directors of leadership. There was, from several different groups that I spoke with, still some lack of clarity as to how those different roles are being defined. And I think in particular now, since with the creation of the executive director position and the evolving nature of the CIA Department, I think that's the area that we need to put some more attention on, and is really helping principals especially better understand the role of, of the CIA Department. So with those findings, I offered 10 recommendations, and again, I'm going to go quickly and happy to answer questions about any that you have questions about. Number one, and the key one, is really engaging strongly with principals and really making sure that they're authentically involved in the decisions being made, especially those that affect them, their buildings, their students, and their staffs, is really, really critical. Number two, I didn't, I kind of glossed over this in one of my findings, but this relates to support for the principals, that they noted the need to continue to explore high-quality alternative education settings, especially Level III, for students who are struggling to succeed in traditional classrooms. Number three is to consider creating a principal leader position, and this could be fashioned in a number of different ways, and it would fit nicely with the work on the principal pipeline that's currently underway. Number four is to revise the teacher evaluation process to align more closely with the coaching visits, which have improved and have started to generate some instructional improvement. But now we need to make sure that the evaluation process sort of is coherent with that, with that process. Let's see, number five is around communication, and really is just to improve the communication to both internal and external stakeholders. The new director of communications, whom I did not have a chance to meet when I was here last, should obviously lead those efforts, but really important to define clear structures and processes, to enhance communications with employees, parents, media, and the larger community. Number six is to really solidify the relationship with OEA. As you all know, there's a new, there's new leadership there, and I had an opportunity to meet with them, and they all expressed very positive feelings and a willingness to work closely with senior staff to really try to forge a strong partnership that will enable improved decision-making and communication across the district. Number seven, I kind of touched on this one already, but I said to restructure, I recommended restructuring and rebranding the school stat process, and in fact, that recommendation has already been taken. The superintendent decided, after careful consideration, to, to keep the district stat process correct, but to end the school stat process. And simultaneously, the executive directors are working to create sort of less formalized structures that are similar, but I would say are more authentic ways to engage principals, to focus on data, and to, to think carefully and reflect carefully on, on the instructional improvement process. I think that's a very, very positive development. Number eight is to continue to empower the executive directors of school leadership to deploy resources to schools without having to seek approval from other administrators. Again, the way this would actually be rolled out, there's a whole range of ways that it could be done, but the idea is to, as they're being held accountable, as the executive directors are being held accountable for achievement and outcomes in their schools, to also give them the autonomy and the authority to make some resource decisions related, related, related to those. Number nine, I spoke to this one already, but to really clarify the evolving role of the CIA leadership span of control and focus on areas that previously were clearly their responsibility, but now are starting to shift or have shifted to the executive directors of school leadership, to sort of really clarify for everyone, but I think especially for principals, teachers, and central office staff, what the, what the role and responsibility is of CIA vis-à-vis the executive directors is really important. And then number 10, with that grant from the, very generous grant from the Sherwood Foundation, I think it's really incumbent upon the district to assess the impact of the new social workers that are going to be supporting the student outcomes in the, in the schools where they're going to be placed. So that was a quick overview. I'm happy to answer any, any questions. Thanks.
So does anyone have any questions for Mr. Joftis? Mr. Scanlon?
Could you go into more detail about the, you had a couple of bullets there about the Board of Education. Could you go into more depth about what feedback you got?
Sure. Oh, sure. So, so a couple things. So one is, I, you know, I don't think I'm going to be able to say anything that you all don't already know, but I think the board continues to be very divided. Most votes happen on a five-four basis. The positives are that I think there are much clearer processes and structures that have been put in place. So there's a handbook that has been developed. There's a really great, and I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the name of it, but it's a calendar for helping to make decisions that, another thing, I forgot to point this out in the findings, another thing that I think could be kind of a national model. So I think there are things that are being put in place that are intended to improve the governance of the board, and just encouraging the future board, whatever the composition of that is, to sort of take advantage of those structures and processes that you're putting into place, and continue to stay focused on, on the strategic plan. I'm not sure if I'm addressing all of your questions.
I think you touched on it.
We didn't go into a ton of, a ton of further detail about that.
Did you ask much of, like, the focus groups that you were with? Did you ask them their perception of the board?
Not as much this time. So the, my second visit, which was in April of, sorry, sorry, no, January of 2015, that was a big topic of conversation that came up on, among many of the focus groups I spoke with. It was not something that people volunteered as they did that time, and it wasn't something that I probed for much beyond that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Fay. You had a question?
Yeah. So when you, I'm just going to have to push back a little bit, because I think it's actually damaging when you make public comments that say that the board continues to be divided, and most votes happen on a four-to-five basis, because I actually think that's not true. And unless you went back and you counted all the votes, and you can say, here they are, then I actually think that that is harmful. And I have had state senators and other people come to me and say, well, you continue to be divided, and I, you know, and I ran down a list, and right now, off the top of my head, I can't come up with them, but I probably could, given the time, but of things where we have been very united, over some really major things. And so, student assignment plan, for example, is the one that just popped into my head. So, you know, I just, I guess if you're going to make comments like that, I would like to see them backed up with some information that says, here's the numbers, because otherwise I think it's harmful to the perception that, that I don't see. I think it's okay for us to have healthy discussions and not always vote in unison, because I sat on a board where we voted almost always 11 to 1, or 10 to 2, or something like that, and we were roundly criticized for that, or quite often 12 to 0. So you can't have it both ways. You can't be always voting together and criticize the board for that, or have healthy discussion that maybe, you know, leads to a little bit more of a split vote, and be criticized for that. I find that a very unfair and impossible situation for the board, this board or the next board, to handle.
So I have a question on alternative education. If you could just help us understand a little bit more about, so we're, we had approved, I think, close to a year ago, to do middle school alternative, and so it moved from TAC to another location, and, and that hopefully will be expanding a little bit. There's some construction work going on there. But help us understand, at the high school level, exactly what, what's being asked, because I want to make sure that we all understand it, and if there's something that we can help facilitate, or if something comes in front of us, that we have a more clear understanding of what it is that the expectation?
So this was, came out of the principals, both principals' focus groups. I think there's just a sense, and again, it's not, this is not something that I delved into deeply, but there's a sense among the principals that there are students in their schools that are dangerous to themselves, to other students, to the facilities, and they are being left to their own devices in terms of how to, how to handle those kids. And I think there's just, that was one of a few things where they felt like they're asking for help and support, and they're not feeling like they're being heard.
What, okay. And, oh, I just have a question. What, what options are available, maybe, in other districts that you've seen done? Because we have, we have a few alternatives, but...
Yeah, so this is, again, another point, I mean, similar to what Ms. Fay just talked about, is because there are districts that have alternative schools that are roundly criticized because they're viewed as a way to take those kids and take them out of schools and not educate them well. And some of those schools are, phrases are used like, or terms are used like prisons. So we have to be careful in coming up with a strategy, and I know that the district is doing that. It's a challenge everywhere, and especially urban districts that are serving lots of high need kids that are suffering from a lot of trauma. I couldn't, I couldn't point to one where they're really hitting it out of the park. There are districts that have been seriously, seriously criticized for how they have handled that. I know of very few, if any, off the top of my head, that have really gotten that well, have really done it well.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to tie in, I, and I didn't hear, obviously don't, I'm not privy to all the conversations in the focus group that Scott heard, but I do hear from probably middle school more than any other group, and I oftentimes hear that since Wilson focus changed as a middle school transition, that that's the need area. So we are really looking deep into that, and I think I've shared a little bit with the board, and we intend to come back with some thoughts specific to middle school, because it, that's probably the, the area I, I hear the most. I'm not saying we don't hear a little bit about elementary and high, but, but that's the one.
That's consistent with what I heard, too. It would be middle first, then high, and then definitely less, if at all, on the elementary level, at that, at that level three or four child.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Joftis or any comments? Mr. Scanlon?
I guess this is a question to the board. This being our final Critical Friend visit, would anybody be up for having a discussion of a follow-up as far as having that third party with an honest, unbiased evaluation come back, or, you know, we contract out for the next three years, or whatever it looks like? I'd just like to have that discussion at the board table.
I did actually ask Mr. Evans if he could find out kind of what that would look like and what it would cost, so that, whether that would be something that we could talk about putting in the budget, or if there would be someone willing to assist with those costs. So I guess in thinking about Mr. Scanlon's question, is that something... party with an honest, unbiased evaluation come back, or, you know, we contract out for the next three years, or whatever it looks like? I'd just like to have that discussion at the board table.
I did actually ask Mr. Evans if he could find out kind of what that would look like and what it would cost, so that whether that would be something that we could talk about putting in the budget, or if there would be someone willing to assist with those costs. So I guess in thinking about Mr. Scanlon's question, is that something board members are interested in hearing more of? Mrs. Underwood?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I don't think that even crossed my mind, but I think, as he said, third and final, I was a little bit saddened by that, because this is really helpful to get that, like you said, third-party feedback. So, yeah, I would definitely be open to kind of looking at what the cost would be to maybe amend our contract. Yeah, that's all I had.
Ms. Williams?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Scanlon. I know that Mrs. Gotti and I had touched on it very briefly in our last Board Officers meeting, but I think that there's, Scott, that you bring something to this table. You've built relationships with key members of our district and principals, and I think that the information and the insight you bring back is crucial for us as a board to kind of help us guide the district and help Mr. Evans of where our collective vision is. So this, for me, is something that I am excited to hear, because I also want to see, you know, where we are in the next two years as well, and where we've made gains. And I think that your, that independent insight that you bring, again, and that trust piece is huge. And you truly have really built that up within our community and with our staff, and it's a value add to the work that we're doing. But I think it's critical for us to move forward and to be the successful district that we can be. And also, I think you also bring up another perspective of where we are leading in some areas. You talked about economic inclusion. I'm so happy that we were able to do that.
Yeah.
And it's not something that a typical school district does, but we've also built something specific in our community that directly impacts our students.
Yeah.
And so I like both sides of this, to know, okay, well, this is kind of that gut check. Where do we really need to start focusing? It's great to talk about all the positive stuff.
Yeah.
Where do we need to focus on that needs for improvement? And I think you, your voice is very critical in that, for where we need to go as a district. So I personally am in favor of moving forward and working through some additional contract or extensions or something.
Any other thoughts on that? Well, maybe, Mr. Evans, you can work on that for us and bring it back to us, and then go ahead.
I'd be happy to, and I can look for some external, there may be some grant resources because the community's been very supportive of the process in the past. They like having a third party that's not connected to us, give us a pretty unbiased look. And sometimes, by the way, it's, we've got to really think about it. Even though we don't agree with everything that you were told, it's how people feel.
Right.
And that's the way I look at some of that. I think, gosh, that doesn't seem quite accurate on that. And then I think, well, it doesn't really matter what I think. If someone feels that way, that's how they feel. And I have no reason to believe that you had put something in this letter that someone didn't share with you. Obviously, that's, you have no reason to not do that. So I think we have to do that, and I will share with the board that we do take action on it, and we need to take action on it. We're having, for example, an executive council retreat to review many parts of this letter. And part of it has to do with us being on the same page. I have, clearly, I see evidence sometimes with the executive council members still in silos, and we have to break that down. We have to work together. We have to share together. No one works in isolation. That's part of what I see from our principals. We also need to work on really listening to them, and that's clearly stated in his information. We clearly need to work on how we work with OEA. I can share with you that I met with OEA leadership at length today and had a great meeting, and I think we're setting some of the stage for progress in that area. But it's not easy, and none of it will be easy, but it does require someone coming back in saying, do they see progress? And if they don't, why don't they? And what did you do in response to what, whether it's teachers, principals, community leaders? We need to be responsive to their perceptions, even if we sometimes think, well, gosh, I don't know. I think we're listening to principals pretty good. Well, not really, if they're saying that. You may think you are, but if they feel like you're just doing things to them, and that's clearly what I heard you say. And I think it would have been better after our summer retreat, because I did see your letter prior to the retreat.
Yeah.
But that's neither here nor there. I need to continue, and we need to continue developing a good response. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate the board's willingness to letting me loose to see if we can't continue this relationship to get this honest feedback.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here, and yes, it's been a great three years.
Yeah, I agree.
We've accomplished a lot.
And I just want to say, just personally, too, whether or not I get to come back and work with you all, it's been such a pleasure, and it's so refreshing. I know not everyone agrees with everything I say, but the willingness to let me do this and to do it in a public way speaks such volumes about the board and the administration and the staff, because we have some tough conversations sometimes. And I don't even share necessarily all the details, but I think there's a real willingness to get feedback and share ideas, and I really appreciate it, and I really commend the district on that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Evans here as we get ready to roll out. And I guess I'll just share that, based on some of the comments that Mr. Jopdis had, and some of the work we've done in the past at workshops, this looks a little bit different from a strategic plan. So I'll let Mr. Evans share, and then we'll get started.
I think we tried to look at the board members' comments from last year, and we didn't want to do anything that was too heavy on too much data, and we didn't want to do anything that was overwhelming with strategies. And so it's kind of a condensed version in an effort to meet some of the comments we heard last year. So not quite as broad-based. And again, I wish we had all the data from this last year. So some of this data is the year before, because we're still putting that together. But it is a condensed version, and again, we hope to come back with the real data, or not the real data, but the accurate, up-to-date data in the fall at a later date.
So before we get started, I just want to toss out a couple of things. The past two years, the board has actually sat and kind of worked through what we thought the strategies and what we thought the objectives should be. But as we heard from Mr. Jopdis, the staff feels pretty overwhelmed, and we've made a lot of changes. We also have some changes coming for this fall. And as I've been talking to kids, I'm hearing that those changes are going to have a big impact on their lives, and ultimately, principals will probably hear about that. So one of those changes is, as we've talked about standards-based grading, we're rolling out that pilot program, which will impact kids. And we're also into our third year of implementing academic eligibility. So this year, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will have that 2.0 requirement, which will be a change. And so in August, we'll have a workshop on the athletic eligibility requirement, and we can all talk about that, see how it's going to look, and make sure that we're comfortable with how that rollout is. So I think what we wanted to make sure we focused on, from hearing from the district and from Mr. Evans, was maybe not adding to the things that are on the list of principals and administrators, but trying to make sure that what we implement, we implement with depth and with quality. And we've, there's no doubt about the fact that the last three years have been a whirlwind, and as has been said many times, we build the plane while we fly it. So what I'm going to ask is, as the two presenters, Research and Mr. Loaro, go through this. As you get to a page, if you would just stop, and if there's a question about a specific piece of data that the board has as far as, if we saw a decrease in something, what did we do for the 15-16 year? What do we have lined up for the fall of 16-17? If you would call on, whether it's somebody in the audience, or provide for us what the strategy is that's being implemented, because you've all sat through a lot more meetings than we have. I would appreciate that. So if just, there's a lot of pages to this report, so I just want to make sure board members get to ask questions if they have questions.
Excellent. And I will take it over for the data piece, and we'll get rolling right away. Just to preface before we get started, there are a number of attachments associated with this presentation. The presentation itself is the first one. The Critical Friends Visit memo that we just discussed is the second. Primary objectives connected to strategies is the third piece. The Strategic Plan scorecard for 2014-15, which serves as the bulk of this presentation, is next, followed by the 2015-16 scorecard that includes those critical dates when data becomes available. Additionally, we have the Strategic Plan work group progress towards those critical and identified objectives. Having stated that, I'll now begin speaking of the data. We want to talk first about the scorecards that are attached, and you'll see many of these symbols and elements appearing in the presentation as well. The scorecard includes a number of things, but is meant to detail our progress towards the outcomes of the strategic plans. Those are the overall outcomes, the high-level metrics, if you will. It displays both the five-year goals and our annual progress towards those goals. Our annual progress towards the goals have some symbols associated with them. For goals where we are progressing, we have a green arrow that points up. For those goals we are maintaining our current projection towards, we have a little yellow arrow that points to the side. And for those goals that we are moving away from in the opposite direction, we have a red arrow that points down. Just to talk of the order of the presentation, we're looking at this presentation as it relates to the student's educational lifecycle, so that is, coming to the district or opting out, as the case may be here, through their engagement within the school process and the outcomes associated with that. Once they get to high school, their on-track measurements towards graduation. We'll speak of achievement outcomes and the gaps associated with those outcomes, graduation rates, and elements of college and career readiness. Prior to speaking of the goals, I just want to talk very briefly about how these goals were set. I'm not sure if this has ever been presented to the board, so I'll just do so very quickly. When we were setting these goals, the guidance from our third-party consultants was to set aggressive goals, goals that are meant to be motivational and aspirational. And those goals, to serve that purpose, were set above and beyond the trends at the time, with the understanding that we would be deploying new strategies that would change the trajectory of the district upwards. Outcomes tied to key metrics associated with the strategic plan were created then, and strategies advancing principles and principles moving outcomes will ultimately hope to be resulting in increased overall outcomes. To speak towards the first measurement, that district leaving or opt-out rates, our goal is to decrease the number of students opting out of the district by 5% annually. Our goal for 2018-19 was 4,664 students. We are hanging even on that one. In 2014-15, we saw 6,099 students exit from the district. That was up ever so slightly, but nearly equivalent to what we saw in 2013-14, when 6,027 students exited the district. When I speak through these outcomes, we'll speak both of the current reality from last year till this, or 2013-14 to 14-15, as well as the trend. The overall trend for district leaving and opt-out rates, as I said before, has remained relatively stable, though with slightly more students opting out of the district.
And I have one point on that, that I guess we say an 18-19 target goal, but I think what I would like to see is what our capacity is. So we know that five of our seven high schools are completely packed and maxed out. The other two have some space, but clearly not even close to the space to get the numbers down to where it would need to be. I visited with an elementary school principal whose school is on the south side of Dodge Street this summer, and she shared with me that she has as many portables outside as she has classrooms inside. So we clearly have some capacity issues, which I think drive that, and maybe in some cases, beyond our current physical capacity control. So I guess I'd like to, as we get to the facility study in September, I'd like to have that data so that we can understand it, because there's really, if we don't have the space, that 18-19 goal may not be a, it may be very aspirational if you don't have a building to put the kids in. So I guess I would just, that may be a really tough one, based on our facilities, especially where we have huge populations of students.
Indeed. Moving on to topics around student engagement.
Mr. Wayne has a question on the...
Please.
So, I'm just sorry I got this. We had more people opt out this year?
In 2014-15, in fact, yes, we did, over the course of a number of years. In 15-16, data is available on that metric, and we do see an additional number of students opting out. We went from 6,027-13-14 to 6,099 in 2014-15. Then 2015-16, we're at 6,219.
And can you provide follow-up data regarding where the opt-outs, where those students opted out at over the last, I guess it's to be four years, geographically?
Could you also provide at what grade levels? Because I think that makes a difference as well, or at least elementary, middle, high?
Yes, absolutely. We'll get that together and give it to Mr. Ray. Other questions? I'll move on. Looking at our first engagement construct, we look at connectedness of students. This is increasing the percentage of students with a high level of school connectedness and high commitment to learning. We measure this using the annual Student Engagement Survey, and there are some specific questions associated with those two components, connectedness and high commitment to learning. The population for that survey is students in grades four and above. We have a current goal of 75% of students who are perceived to be exhibiting high levels of connectedness and high commitment from a perceptual standpoint. Our most recent results for our baseline survey are 65.86. That puts us 9% away from the current goal. Data is currently being tabulated for that, and will be available shortly in August. Looking at our second engagement metric, to increase the percentage of students who are highly engaged in the classroom, again, we use the Annual Student Engagement Survey for students in grades four and above, and this is the proportion of students whose responses agree or strongly agree. The goal of 66% of students, we find that 54.27% of students in 2014-15 answered either agree or strongly agree. That puts us 11.34% away from our current goal. And as these are the baseline years of this survey, we've sought to finalize the survey, and so there is no trend data available with that. Though, looking at our third engagement area, attendance is often considered a behavior engagement outcome. We find a goal of decreasing the percentage of students who are absent 10 or more days, excluding medical absences. We have a SIS attendance dashboard that serves as the basis for that data, pulled from Infinite Campus. Population is for all students, with a goal of 25% of students. Currently, we are just above that goal, at 28.89% of students. That's 3.9% above the goal. We are making good progress, though, and we'll have more data available shortly on that one, having just completed the state report associated with it. When we look at the trend for this, we see that, as it relates to the trend, we are up ever so slightly from 2012-13, though in the last year, we have shown gains.
Ms. Williams?
Is there, I guess for just looking forward, can we kind of take that breakdown of attendance? I'd like to kind of see what the rationale, whether it was ill, religious, holiday, medical, all of, is it?
Yeah, this is just...
Okay, so excluding medical, but if there's any rationale or tie to attendance issues.
Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie, we did the attendance workshop. Was that data from first semester as well?
Correct.
Correct. And so are you, were you guys planning, I think we talked about getting that second semester data dropped in?
Yes, we can pull second semester, having just completed the attendance report as well. We should be able to not only tell you kind of what it looks like for the full year, as well as looking at those discipline, or sorry, attendance types that are included in this calculation, to ensure that it excludes all it should, other than just medical absences, specifically those new codes that were created.
So if we could put that on as a receipt of reports at a board meeting, and then if anyone wants to have it as an information item, we can, you know, bring it back and do that, but that way it'll be available for the public as well.
Okay. Moving to our final measure of behavioral engagement, discipline. We find a goal to decrease the percentage of students... We find a goal to decrease the percentage of students who are suspended or expelled from school. Measure is the recently completed annual state report. We'll be speaking again of 2014-15 data. We are working towards a goal of 5.12%, and 14-15, we are at 9.5% of students. That puts us at 4.4% away from our goal, though we had shown improvement between 2013-14 and 14-15. Data will be available shortly before the end of the month on this metric as well. What we see is that, in general, the trend is downward, certainly from last year, and down ever so slightly from the 2012-13 measurement. Moving on to high school, looking at those students who are on track to graduate, we find a goal to have increased percentages, increase the percentage of students who are on track to graduate by the end of each school year. We use the view of campus records to see who is on track, given our requirements for graduation from high school. We use high school student records for this purpose. The goal is 90% of students being on track, and the 14-15 result was 81.2%. That's 8.8% away from our goal and showing progress from 2013 to 2014. Looking at the trend, we see a solid increase moving from 2012-13 to 2014-15. Switching gears, we'll look at some achievement outcomes, where our first goal is to increase the students who are found to be proficient every year across all grades and subjects on state accountability tests. We use the state test reporting system to acquire NISA results for this purpose. Our population is grades three through eight and 11 for reading and math, grades five, eight, and 11 for science, and grades four, eight, and 11 for writing. Our goal for math is 72%, reading 80%, science 71%, and writing 75%. Our most recent results are 54% in math, moving us within 18% of our goal, 67% for reading in 2014-15, moving us within 13% of our goal, 51% in science, moving us within 20% of our goal, and 54% in writing, and that moves us 21% from our goal. This represents an increase across all of these metrics from 2013-14 to 2014-15. The most recent results from the 2015-16 assessments will be available in October with the state of the schools report. This just shows those trends, that as they are up from 2013-14, we also find them up from 2012-13 to 2014-15. Now we're going to look at the gaps associated with our achievement outcomes for students. We want to decrease, of course, those gaps amongst all student subgroups on state accountability test. Again, we use the state test reporting system to acquire that data, and the same grades are considered. There are many goals associated with this. It's the final element of the scorecard. And so you can see on your scorecards, there are quite a few of them. I can look at our trends and our overall results first. We find that with respect to reading, the vast majority of groups are showing an increase from 2013-14 to 2014-15, the exception being our American Indian, our Native American, and Alaskan Native. Gap between those groups and our white students. And the gap between our special education and non-special education students was maintained from 2013-14 to 2014-15. And the gap between our male and female students went the opposite direction and went down a little bit, or up a little bit, actually. Looking at math, we find that, again, the majority did show an increase from 13-14 to 14-15. However, again, Native Americans, either Alaskans or Continental, and the gap between those individuals and the white representatives of the student body, as well as special education and non-special education, and male and females, oh, I went too far, I'm sorry. The majority was equal. Those groups I just read, including male and female students, declined, and the gap between our LEP and non-LEP students was maintained. Moving to science, again, we found a majority of groups did show gains. However, our Asian and white gap, as well as the gap between our special education and non-special education students, did go up. The gap between African-American students and white students, as well as male and female students, was maintained. Finally, moving to writing, we find once again, the majority did show improvement. However, the gap between Hispanic and white students, Asian and white students, LEP and non-LEP students, all went down, and the gap between male and female students was maintained. So we're going to look at some of the trends now associated with these results. We'll do them first from a racial perspective, and then switch for each assessment to then other group perspective, if you will. And what we found looking at the gap for reading is that the gap was closing between African-American, Asian, and Hispanic students and their white counterparts. We found the gap increasing between Native American students and white students. And that was for reading. Now, looking at some of these other subgroup classifications, we found that the gap in reading was widening between males and females, and special education and non-special education students. The gap was closing, as we would hope to find it, between refugee and non-refugee students, and free and reduced lunch and full-pay students, and LEP and non-LEP students. Moving on to mathematics, we look at it first from a racial perspective and find that the gap is closing between African-American and Hispanic students and their white counterparts. The gap between Native American students and white students is being maintained, and the gap is increasing, increasing between Asian students and white students. Looking at those other groupings on the mathematics test from NISA, we find that the gap is being maintained between free and reduced lunch and full-pay students, as well as for LEP and non-LEP students. And the gap is widening between female and male students, and special education and non-special education students. Moving to science. In science, we find that the trend shows a narrowing gap between Hispanic and Native American students and white students. The gap is being maintained between African-American and white students, and the gap is widening between Asian and white students.
I have a question on that, sir. I guess I don't know quite how many students, I don't know what the population is, and I didn't go back and try to dig that out. But are there other factors impacting that on that increase with Asian, white? I know when we get to Native Americans, such a small population, it's hard to figure those out, but...
Sure. I think you have a number of things to consider with the Asian population. It is a smaller population when compared to our white, African-American, or Hispanic populations. So you do have cohort effects. The groupings of students associated with that category can differ or change the metric greatly, given a smaller number of them. It's harder to change a larger grouping of students average. Additionally, we do find that many of our refugee populations from Myanmar and other areas do fit within this category as well. And so while many of them will have a different version of the assessment for a number of years, that does go away after a couple of years, and they are required to take NISA. So that definitely can affect that subgroup, especially given its size as well.
Ms. Fay.
Yeah, I think it's worth just stating, I know we've talked about it before, but maybe not recently, how those definitions come about, because I think we use the definitions that the federal government required for No Child Left Behind, right?
That's correct.
So your African, the definition of an African-American student could very well be a student who isn't African-American at all, but is an immigrant, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. And an Asian, an Asian student could be someone who's been here for, born and raised here, but identifies as Asian-American. It could also be someone, a student from, yeah, current student or, right? I mean, it's a very imprecise way to identify a particular group of students.
Absolutely.
Correct?
Indeed. And it is fully self-report, so it is up to the student to report the race they most identify with. But you are absolutely correct. Well, I think, you know, that it is a complicated subject in itself.
Right, right. I mean, but there is no category for African students, for example.
Oh, I see. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
That's not a category that they can even choose from.
Indeed. No, absolutely.
Right, yeah.
We are constrained in the number of choices. If you pick more than one, you're two or more, so...
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking that when we were looking at the reading, because just looking at the Hispanic and the Asian population reading, I thought, well, it could be, and then we also looked at the English language learner. It could be that a heavier population, those students all fall, also fall into that grouping. And that's why we're seeing that trend the way it is. And I think that's where it gets really complicated. You're absolutely right.
Moving on, in science, to some of those non-racial groupings. We find the gap narrowing between male and female students, and LEP and non-LEP students, the gap being maintained between free and reduced lunch students and full-pay students, and the gap widening between special education and non-special education students. We'll now shift to looking at growth, which is another way of measuring or tracking the achievement of students. Here, we find a goal of increasing the percentage of students with at least one year of academic growth in the current school year on the NISA math and reading test. Once again, we use the state test reporting system. This is for grades three through eight. The goal is 70% in math and 74% in reading. The most recent result in 14-15 was 50% in math and 59% in reading. This puts us 20% away in math and 21% in reading. Our progress from 2013-14 to 2014-15 found us going in the wrong direction for mathematics, unfortunately, though we do see, as you'll see in a minute, an overall trend that is in the right direction. And reading did go up from 2013-14 to 2014-15. There's that mentioned trend, where we do find, though last year we did suffer a setback in math, going from 2013-14 to 14-15, both math and reading are up from 2012-13. Moving away from achievement data, now looking at graduation rates, we find a goal to increase the percentage of students graduating from high school in one, four years, or two, five years. These are two different overall outcomes that have just been lumped together here for ease of reporting. We use the annual state report as our unbiased look at this metric. Population is high school students, graduates in particular. We have a goal of 90%. In 14-15, we saw a four-year graduation rate slip ever so slightly to 78.2%, moving us 11.8% away from our goal. Though the fifth year, five-year goal did, we found an increase and moved closer towards that goal, with graduation moving up to 83.4%, that's 6.6% away from our five-year graduation goal. And as I said, that does mark an increase. New data will be available on this topic in January of 2017. Looking at the overall trend of graduation rates, we find the four-year rate is up ever so slightly, just under half of a percent. The five-year rate is up more substantially, around the pure 4%.
Go back.
Sure.
The four-year rate is up?
From the beginning. Our four-year rate...
You're looking at...
The trend. Half, well, that's four tenths of a percent up.
Looking at 12-13 to 14-15.
Okay. But it dropped in the last year.
From 2013-14 to 14-15, correct.
Yeah, what's the percentage of the, what's that percentage? What's that percentage of the drop?
I do have that available, just one second.
So it's up, you said less than half a percent from 12-13, and down two and a half percent from last year.
Correct. In 2012-13, we went, we had a 77.78% graduation rate. That ticked up to 80.74%, so about 2% in 2013-14, and then dropped back down to 78.24% in 2014-15. That represents a two and a half percent increase from 2012-13 to 2013-14, and around a four-tenths percent reduction going to 2014-15.
And that graduation rate, I remember a few years ago, the state adjusted their formula to mirror the federal government, right? For the four-year, because the federal government doesn't acknowledge the five-year. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
Well, you're the research guy, so...
That's me.
Good. And so that, and that's what we're using. We're using the state's formula to, you know, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to send that out as well. We don't need a presentation on it, but just so that we can see how the state determined, because it's not, graduation rate is not the same thing. You can't just take dropout rate and come up with graduation rate. They're completely independent formulas that don't necessarily...
Correct. It's a four-year cohort or a five-year cohort, so it's the same kids who started together, progressing through together.
Right.
You're correct.
And dropout rate is figured...
That's based on the students who drop out from any point within that timeframe. So they are two distinct calculations, and we'd be happy to provide that.
I think that's important for us to understand and for the public to understand, because otherwise, you look at the dropout rate, and you go, well, why isn't your, you know?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, and then also, yeah, just send that, that'd be good. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So to that point, looking at the dropout rate, which of course we want to see a decrease in, specifically a decrease in the percentage of students dropping out each school year. Again, we use the annual state report to get this data. The population is once again high school students. We have a goal of 1.5%. Our most recent result in 2014-15 was 2.7%. That puts us 1.2% away from our goal. And the progress from 2013-14 to 14-15 was in the wrong direction ever so slightly. Looking at that trend, we do see ever so slight, again, ever so slight of an increase over time in our dropout rate. Okay. And we'll look at some college and career readiness data as it relates to industry certifications, both those courses where certifications were available, as well as the students earning course certification, or industry certification within that course. This is an area where we've seen rapid expansion in the district, that is, this career area. And in fact, it's been very difficult to keep up with our data-keeping techniques with the expansion. So we are working with Ken Spellman, who is in attendance, hello, Ken, thank you, and Career Tech Eds, to identify with IMS's help those metrics, which we can track so that we can make sure that we're flagging courses, that this is an option in, as well as better keeping those records for industry certifications that students receive while in those courses. So currently, there is very little data available. Most of these records are kept in a paper-pencil format currently. We have received those records and are currently tabulating them while we work towards identifying a process of keeping them in campus and making sure that we can acquire that data in the future. Looking at college credits, as it relates to career readiness, we find a goal of increasing the percentage of graduates who are, one, taking a course that is offered for dual credit, and, two, earning a college credit while at OPS. Measure is reviewing campus records. We look at high school students taking these courses. These are two areas that we do need to identify a goal, and we will certainly work with our curriculum and instruction and assessment staff to help identify that goal prior to bringing it back to you again. Our most recent result found 61.3% an increase from 2013-14 to 14-15 of the number of students who are enrolled in a course for which dual credit was an option. However, we did go down a little bit, with only 36.7% of students actually receiving that credit in the course. And we are currently working to tabulate 15-16 results, and that data will be available early in fall.
I have a question on that, because I do get phone calls on this, and so I, sometimes I give advice as a parent-type person that I think is helpful for the student. But these aren't just AP courses, I take. I take it that they're also classes that they could, or are they all AP courses? No.
No, they're not.
So, so one of the questions that I have is, and I know for my own children personally, I tell them to take the class, but not to earn the credit, because I want them to have a solid understanding, and then when they take... a solid understanding, and then when they take it in college, I want them to have some background and information. But I get calls from parents who say, okay, I took, my child took the dual credit class, but they're getting a C because I didn't realize it was going to be as hard as it was, and that will transfer over to their college credit, and now they're telling me their scholarship is in jeopardy because their GPA is lower. So those are always times when you say, okay, well, you know, you need to work with a college, and do you have to take it as an earned credit? So I guess the question is, I think we want to see kids take the classes, but I don't, I don't know that earning the credit, I think that's a personal decision that maybe has to be right for the family. I know Mrs. Faye and I have kind of had that conversation a little bit before.
I have never encouraged any of my kids to get the credits.
Right, and I've always told my kids-
Why was that, Faye? I haven't. I just, I don't-
And I've done the same thing with my kids.
I don't think it's a good measure.
I tell them not to take the, because I want them to take it again, and a lot of times it isn't accepted. But for some kids, I think it is the right thing to do, so that's why I say it's a personal thing.
Absolutely.
For my kids, it was one thing, but for other kids, it may be a different. But I do get quite, I do get calls from the frantic parent who says, oh, wow, my child now got a C, or is not doing really well in this class. So I guess I have a question about that.
Well, I guess it's just, your point is, is this a really good measure? I mean, taking the class is one thing.
Right, I think taking is-
Counting the number of students who take classes that are either AP classes or classes where you're eligible for dual enrollment is one thing, but is it, is because it's such a personal decision on a family-by-family basis, and there's lots of considerations besides just the ones that you named, there's financial considerations as well.
Oh, exactly, absolutely.
Because, you know, my family, for example, wouldn't qualify for any kind of special tuition remission or whatever. But, so is it, is it a very accurate thing to be measuring, and is it?
Right, because I know kids that go in with 20 or 30 credits, which is great, because they just bypassed an entire year of college. And that's an awesome thing for that student if they were able to get the grade in the class, which is a wonderful thing. But for some kids, it may or may not be. And so I think the taking it is important, but I don't know if the earning it is as important. Ms. Americo.
I, that's kind of related to the question I was going to ask. Do we track why people aren't going for the dual enrollment credit?
I certainly don't and have not seen that tracked, no.
Is that something that we, I mean, is there a way that we could follow up when kids are taking the class and ask them, are you not doing the dual enrollment credit? Is it for financial reasons? Is it for this reason? Is it because you aren't interested in earning the college credit? Just so we have a way of tracking that? Because I think it would be interesting to see if we have a lot of kids that are taking these, and yes, it is a higher class, a harder class when you're doing it as dual enrollment, and they're not going for the credit because of financial reasons. I know I see that in my day job. I have students come and say, well, I took this class in high school, but we didn't have the money to pay for the dual enrollment fee, so I didn't do it as dual enrollment. And then they are retaking a class that, really, they got an A in it in high school. There's no reason for them to retake English Comp. 1. So I think that'd be interesting if we could find a way to find out why.
Absolutely. Now, I think either a short survey or maybe a focus group with some individuals engaged in such curriculum could get us some answers to that, perhaps some solutions for those students who are not doing so due to some barrier.
Thanks. All right.
Okay. Moving on to another measure of college and career readiness at ACT results. We hope every year to increase the average ACT composite score. This is an annual ACT report we receive every summer from ACT. Late in the summer, we compile it and prepare a report for the board in January. The goal is for 20 composite points to be earned on average. Our most recent result in 1415 was 19.1 composite points. That puts us 0.9 away from our goal and represents maintenance of where we were the year before, 19 to 19.1. So, our current result. Our average score has stayed roughly the same across the 2012-13 to 2014-15 period. 2012-13, we started at 19, moved to 19.2 in 2013-14, and then to 19.1 in 2014-15.
So I have a question on that one, and maybe it's for Mr. Evans, but as we, so we know that the NESA for 11th grade will move to something, either ACT or SAT, and that the pilot program will be this next year, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the full implementation will be the following year. So my question is related to offering quarter or semester classes related to preparation for that, because I think for some kids, it's not so much the questions on the test, it's, it's a whole lot about the strategy of taking the test and, and, and again, I mean, it's, it's a test. I know we're offering those type of things in the summer. I know that kids can pay for classes during the school year, but I guess I've always wondered if that could be an elective that we were offering, you know, sophomore, junior year, and whether or not we've thought about that.
The high school principals have had, excuse me, lots of conversation about that. And depending on school, they're doing different things. Some of them are offering courses like, I can't recall the number, I want to say three of the seven, and others are doing after-school tutorial kind of work. It depends on the school. We've, we've talked about it, but haven't made any clear movement on it. I know it's a conversation we're going to have, obviously, with the change at the state level and the statutory movement towards ACT. Districts across the whole metro area are talking about what they want to do with that shift. So it's, it's a good conversation to have.
Ms. Williams.
Well, and I just, I think it's something that we should be looking at as something mandatory, because you're looking at, you know, our, we have high poverty, and, and a lot of our families can't afford to pay for that, and you can only get so many of those courses at no cost and really wanting to be prepared for the ACT. And I'm a little bit, in this area, for me, it's, I graduated 25 years ago. I know I don't look it, but we had, we did eight, that's when SAT was huge, and so we had that SAT class. So I can't imagine for us, at this point, that we don't have something in our high schools. Elective is fine, but I think we are doing our students a disservice with not having them in all of our high schools have that ACT prep class.
And I guess I would just add, especially for the kids who are playing football in the fall or basketball in the spring, or are involved in those fall sports or spring sports, that's typically when those after-school classes are offered, and so it's really not an option for them if they're going to practice. So I guess, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that as we prepare for this being a required event. And I know one of my kids didn't take anything, but the other one took a John Baylor class, and, I mean, it, it definitely helped just from a strategy standpoint, so just kind of thinking about that.
Excellent. And moving to a metric that certainly will be eclipsed if we move to the ACT at the state level, and that is the percentage of our graduates who are taking the ACT, where we hope to maintain or increase the percentage of students taking the ACT by the end of their 12th grade year. The measure would, once again, unless things change, that annual ACT report with our population being high school students, with a goal of 63 to 67%. Only goal with a range, I believe. In 2014-15, we saw 61.5% of our students participated in the ACT. That puts us 2.5% away from our goal, and it did represent a slight movement away in the wrong direction from our goal, though ever so slight. We went from 64.2% in 2013-14, so down a little bit. And that does speak to the trend overall of being down since 2012-13, when we started out with 65.6%, so down just about 4.1%.
I guess the other comment I would have on the ACT is, we pick one test date, correct?
That would be correct.
So we don't-
With the makeup date, if it was the state doing it.
Right, but currently, we may have a student that took it in, let's just say, September and December, but didn't take it in October, but if we select December, how does that work?
Sure, sure. We get all records from throughout the year for any student who indicated they were an OPS student from ACT, so we do get all results from them.
So we pick, no matter what testing date they took, how do we then determine what the average is? Do we take their highest score during that time period?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, we take the highest score submitted for a student and remove any other duplicates. Good question. Moving on to our last college and career readiness metric, in fact, our last outcome. We hope to increase the percentage of graduates enrolled in post-secondary education, enlisted in the military, or employed six months after graduation. Our measure is the graduate follow-up study. Our population is OPS graduates with a goal of 93%. Our most recent result was 87.20. That's 5.8% away from the goal, and it did represent a movement away from the goal going from 2013-14 to 2014-15. The general trend here is moving away from the goal and downwards. We do find in 2012-13, we had 89.73%, and this is self-reported, of our graduates contacted in the graduate follow-up, reporting that they were so employed or within an educational institution or within the military, whereas in 2014-15, as I had stated, we're at 87.20.
Is that the survey that you call and ask?
That's correct. That is the graduate follow-up survey, which we are currently tabulating the results of 15-16. It should be available in the next week or two.
So does it make a difference how many responses you get? I mean, I'm just thinking about that trend. Could it, what's the, or what am I trying to ask? What's the variance on whether the accuracy of it?
We continue calling until we hit a high response rate, so some years the calls go on longer so that we're always within an approximation. And we do detail kind of the average response rate we get every year, so that will be in part of that report to show you annually how many we get. But it is relatively close each year.
So just two quick thoughts. One, with all the technology we have, we should probably be looking at some type of online access survey or something, because I don't, I don't think calling students is necessarily, for this data, is not a valuable use of staff time. So one, maybe look at, or just some options of how maybe it's mixed. Maybe you get some surveys online and some calls and mix it up a little bit. And then I'm also curious to see, I know it's six months, but I almost would like to see six months and a year, because six months for some households and some families, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see anything, but that year point, you might see something. And so just, I mean, just curious, and we can have an offline conversation, but I think those are two things that, you know, maybe mixing up a little bit, we could see some increases, because if you're calling and you're just like, okay, I've, I've got my 200th call, well, that doesn't necessarily, it's, it doesn't give us a good sampling of, of all of our graduates. So just thinking outside of what we can do and how we're, we're moving forward technology, with our technology and with Mr. Dixon, I think there's some other ways that we could actually get more input and really see a little bit better outcomes in this category.
And to your point, we actually deployed that process last year and have this year as well, where we send out first to the graduates a survey option and then check off anyone who responds via the survey. We do have part-time callers who, gosh, for over a decade now, are pretty much the same individuals who have been making these calls for us. They come in the month preceding the winter break and somewhat thereafter to finish up those calls.
And how, what does that look like? I'm just curious, because I know I have a, you know, I have kids that have graduated, and they're not necessarily answering phone calls, honestly, if it's not in the form of a text or some digital media. And so that was just the point of looking at, not to say that that's not valuable, but how maybe there's some other things that we can use the, you know, that staff with, but really reaching students where they are as, as a board. I mean, we came in with no technology. And so we have to think as a district also, is if we're, if we want these outcomes and we want the input from our students, especially our students, you have to reach them where they are, and there, it's, it's technology. So just wanted to throw it out there.
I appreciate that, as always.
All right. Does anyone else have any other questions? I think if, I think if you look back, you see, and I know Mr. Schmidt-Bonnie went over those, but was it the, I think it's the strategic plan worksheet shows the items that we picked from last year and kind of what the status is. Is that correct?
We have the worksheets document.
And maybe Mr. Ray can tell me, which one is the one that we worked on last summer?
So the one that aligns the objectives that you prioritized in three tiers to the strategies that are currently being worked on with the work groups.
Okay.
And also, the strategic plan is uploaded as part of that documents too, for your reference.
Yeah, thank you very much for doing that. Okay, so I don't know if there are no other questions on that. Thank you so much for pulling the data for us, for walking us through it, and we'll look forward to seeing the updated data in October as well. Okay, with that, we will move on to information item E1B, suspension data. I'm not sure. Okay. All right. Get to sit in the hot seat the whole time.
Lest anyone should have some deja vu, it'll be me again, rocking through most of this with Mr. Loire's help as well. And to that end, this report that we're going to provide was first co-presented to exact counsel between Sharif's office as well as research. As a result of that presentation, the superintendent asked us to bring this information to you for this presentation. Note, this report was created in April, therefore, the data for each year runs from the beginning of the school year till April 1st to compare apples to apples, so to speak, and that will be the basis of this comparison. Okay. First, we'll, we'll start kind of at a broad look at the number of behavior incidents by resolution type, which shows the different demarcations within the graph. We find that overall, across these years, the, the number of resolutions has decreased. The total number of behavior incidents has increased somewhat this year over last year, but as I said, that trend is downwards. And particularly, the percentage of incidents that result in expulsion, reassignment, out-of-school suspensions, after-school or overnight suspension, those have all remained relatively stable throughout this time period. However, the percentage of incidents resulting in ISS, PAC, or Student Success Center referrals and attentions in particular have decreased. And as have, actually has increased, the percentage of incidents resulting in other resolution types. Now, to begin speaking about disproportionality or considerations there within, you first have to start with membership, as disproportionality is defined as interplay between a population of students and the percentage of discipline they receive. All else being equal, you would expect the percentage of discipline resolutions given to a group of students to not surpass their membership. We're going to now look at behavior incidents by ethnicity. This chart illustrates the number of behavior incidents by race for the last three school years. The proportion of incidents involving African-American students has increased, while the proportion given to other students has decreased, as can be observed, going from 52.14% of behavioral incidents to 55.35 in 2015-16. We'll now unpack those incidents and look at the specific resolutions that underlie them. We find overall that the trend is of decline, both from last year to this and from 2013-14 to 15-16. In the number of expulsions, they have decreased over this time period. However, the percentage of expulsions involving African-American students has increased this year compared to last. However, it is lower than we found in 2013-14, when it was 60.91%. We've gone down about 2% since then.
Scott?
Yeah, please.
And we did just, I mean, we changed the code of conduct regarding discipline and expulsions and suspensions in this year, this school year as well, right? So that might have something to do with why that number went down?
Sure, it might. There, there are many things that happen once you change the code, though.
Right.
First, for any effect- First, for any effect to have occurred, trainings have to occur, which Dr. Sukora can certainly speak to, then practice has to change as well. So certainly, the, the code was changed, and that will likely begin affecting things even as soon as right now, though, as you'll see in one of our final conclusions to this document, we can't be certain that the changing to the code has caused any of these changes. There isn't a causal assumption we can make at this point.
Well, does that mean you also can't rule it out?
Correct. That's correct. At this point, we can't say what the changes we've observed, of which expulsions declining is certainly a, a good thing to see, but we can't necessarily say exactly why this happened here, and certainly we'll have some conversations with some school staff later on, and we can talk a little more about that.
It's just important to point out, because we used it on the previous report as a positive and as a way to show that we're meeting our goals, but it's important to point out that that code did change.
It did.
So, you know, it's not apples to apples.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Absolutely, no, no, good point.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Moving to reassignments, where the trend has been roughly stable, though we did see quite a decline in 2014-15. However, the percentage of reassignments involving African-American students has increased from last year to this year, as a general trend. The proportion of reassignments for other groups, though, has decreased from 2014 to 2015-16.
Do we have a geographical location of from where to where?
Where the students are attending school or resigning?
Where they were reassigned from and to?
Oh, I see what you're saying, I'm sorry.
And dates of reassignment? Not every specific one, but 30 percent of them is in the first quarter, 30 percent are in the third quarter of second semester, whatever, I mean, just.
You see a breakdown over the school year as to when they occurred?
Yeah.
Kind of a timeline? We'll prepare those documents and get them to Mr. Ray. Moving to long-term suspensions, again, we've seen an overall trend of decline in the number of long-term suspensions we've meted out as a district, going from 192 total in 2013-14 to 118 in 15-16, which is up slightly from 2014-15, when we had only 98. However, the percentage of long-term suspensions involving African-American students has increased this year compared to last year and is up slightly, noticeably, from 2013-14. The percentage of long-term suspensions involving students of other race ethnicities has decreased this year compared to last year. Moving on to short-term suspensions, we find this has maintained relatively consistent across these three years with a slight uptick last year. The percentage of short-term suspensions involving African-American students has decreased slightly this year, or from last year to this year, and is up ever so slightly from where it was in 2013-14. However, in general, short, short-term suspension percentages for other groups have remained relatively stable through that same time period. Other types of discipline, after-school or overnight suspensions, looking at across these groups, we've seen this is something that, the trend is a general increase in the utilization of this resolution type. It did go down from 2013-14 to 2014-15, where we saw a reduction of just under 400 students. It has once again gone up, though, to where, above where we were in 2013-14. The percentage of after-school or overnight suspensions involving African-American students has decreased ever so slightly from this 2014-15 school year until 2015-16. This ratio for other groups has remained fairly steady over the same time period. Looking at in-school suspensions, PAC referrals, and Student Success Center referrals, once again by race ethnicity, we find that the prevalence of using this resolution type has decreased substantially over the last three years, dropping from 2013-14 to 2014-15 and again in 2015-16. However, the percentage of these types of resolutions involving African-American students has increased over the same time period, both as a trend as well as from 2014-15 to Looking at detentions, the number of detentions has decreased overall, but it has increased for African-American students, while detentions for all other groups have declined. Looking at some key questions, we ask, has the percentage of incidents involving certain groups of students, students of different races, et cetera, changed this year compared to previous years? In general, we find that the percentage of incidents involving students has increased this year compared to last year. The percentage of long-term suspensions, ISS, PAC, or SSC referrals and detentions involving African-American students has increased slightly this year compared to last, that is 13-14, or, sorry, 14-15 to 15-16. However, the percentage of short-term suspensions, after-school or overnight suspensions and expulsions involving African-American students have all decreased ever so slightly this year compared to last for this time period. Additionally, the number of discipline incidents in the districts has not changed drastically this year compared to the previous two years that we discussed this evening. There are some observed fluctuations, as you've noted, in discipline numbers from year to year. Therefore, as I kind of mentioned earlier, it's difficult to draw any firm conclusions about the impact of changes to the code after only one year, though we can't exclude them as well, just should mention. The changes that were made to the Code of Conduct prior to the 15-16 school year may have a larger impact in subsequent years as staff continue to become more familiar with the code. It does take some time to effectively communicate policy changes to staff, and it takes even longer for staff to alter their actions so that they are consistent with the new policy. While not directly addressed by the changes to the Code of Conduct, the disproportionality in discipline for African-American students continues to be a problem within the district. These students are much more likely than others to be disciplined in ways that leads to significant losses of instructional time. A more flexible code in terms of how staff may respond to violation does allow for some responses that are tailored to the individual needs of the student or the situation that they've found themselves involved in. However, this flexibility may also allow for some personal bias, implicit or otherwise, and cultural misunderstandings to influence the way discipline is administered within our schools.
So to look at, go ahead. Looking at solutions, so for our district, we've been looking at these elements for some time and really digging into it deeper as we've implemented elements of our strategic plan, our efforts within work groups, and then our stat sessions. And so a couple of points that, to touch on would be the use of the multi-tiered systems of support in the area around behavior, and we have found that through the stat session work with MTSSB, as well as what we're doing within the steering committee, we have cultural proficiency to be embedded throughout that, so that not only are we dealing with a support system for the educators, but also a support system that is mindful of a cultural proficiency or cultural humility framework, allowing us to be able to target the population of students who are being most disproportionately affected by disciplinary practices. In looking at MTSSB, and the reason why we've brought that is because we've seen significant reductions in other places to suspensions and referrals that happen after implementing that approach. It has a positive effect on students and can have a positive effect on students from diverse backgrounds when that's created in a culture, to look at cultural proficiency as a part of that process. Language conversations and interventions are sensitive to and responsive to all varying backgrounds and cultures. Respect for cultural diversity is evident in the MTSSB practices and protocol is a big push and categorized area for what we're looking at in our stat process. For the, in addition to embedding this within the MTSSB elements, this complements the work that we are also currently doing in a variety of, of other areas, and we've shared this before, but it's worth taking a look at again, and the work that we do with Minnesota Humanity Center and the schools that they work with has been one element that complements very well. We'll hear about that later in this presentation. Connections program with Project Harmony, again, that's a community-based approach and is a great support through our strategic plan, school improvement plans, social work program expansion, the academic action plan, and the deep implementation of. The academic action plan allows for us to be able to look at the academic areas that support students feeling a sense of connectedness to the classroom and can then improve in terms of some of their behavior interactions. Tier two support plans that are put in place, making invisible histories visible is another area that we've spoken about before, which allows our students opportunities and our teachers to be able to connect with the communities in which they go to school or in which they work. The Teacher Curriculum Institute is another area that has been able to touch very strong within this. And then making sure that our curriculum materials and textbooks are reviewed and scored using a rubric that requires the content to be multicultural and non-sexist. And not only that the rubric includes that, but that we work with our educators on, well, what does that mean? How, what do I really look for to ensure that it's multicultural? What am I looking for to make sure that there's non-sexist elements? And so there's not just they're looking for visual representation, but the storyline, the narrative, the absent narrative, what, the authors, the content, and making sure that the curriculum is looked at in an intense way. To touch a, a bit on the Minnesota Humanity Center project, one of the things that they have as an advantage is Tara Luna is their evaluator that their funders brought in to fund, to take a look at the work that Minnesota Humanity Center does. And what our educators report in the interviews and surveys that Tara Luna has done is that we have a deeper student engagement. They report that there's less time spent addressing behavioral disruptions, schools that they partner with have fewer office referrals and subsequent suspensions, and then creating a new pathway between the community, families, and the school, as they include schools in that process as well. So we're seeing some strong feedback about the role of Minnesota Humanity Center when a school partners on this, and a common language as well. I wanted to be able to, or we wanted to be able to make sure that we had, in terms of talking about the results of what we're doing, even though some of the data that we've looked at today in both how we're implementing the strategic plan, but also looking at the data related to our suspensions, is that there's activities that are happening, as I shared, but being able to hear from the schools in relationship to what are they working on, what are they doing? And so we'll have principals report on their work with Minnesota Humanity Center, but also those that have gone with the MTSSB. We have Tom Lee, principal at Omaha Northwest High School, Elizabeth Koch at Jocelyn, and we also have Dr. Green, who would be presenting and sharing some information. I don't know if you had, you had, I saw that you may have had a question before that point, but I'd like to have them come up and, and be prepared to share information.
So that's great. So why don't we go with some questions? So maybe as they come forward, they'll be able to share some information too, to answer some of those questions. So first, Ms. Williams, and then if anybody else has a question, raise your hand so I can.
And Dr. Green is with Benson West. I think I missed saying that part.
So I just, my frustration, and I'm sure Mr. Wayne and Mr. Snow, even though he's not here this evening, this is a area of frustration. When you, when we're looking, and, and I understand we've changed the Code of Contact, Code of Conduct and MTS, MTSB, and all, there's things coming, but when we're looking at, I mean, Mr. Wayne was asked about the reassignments. 83 percent. To me, I just can't justify that. I, I can't. And so it's not about any of you at the table, it's more for me about our district. I've had a recent conversation with the principal in my district, and I won't say which one. However, the conversation is, we're not able to hire staff that look like our students that can identify with our students, or we get those staff that can identify with our students, and then they're taken to another building. This, for me, is kind of an area of, of, of extreme frustration, and that's something that I'm hearing in with teachers, I'm hearing with families, I'm hearing with principals. And it's great, we have some great leaders here that are doing some great things in our schools, but this just can't continue to happen like this. I mean, I, I, the frustration from the family members, the frustration from the students, you know, I, I'm, it's a blessing and a curse to walk into a school, a school building, and at any particular moment, you have 20 to 30 kids in a PAC room, or whatever term they're calling it, you know, every school uses it differently, but this is something that we can't just, we can't keep just talking about and say, we're doing this thing, we're doing Code of Conduct, we're doing this thing. I think this is something that, as a district, we need to take very serious action and really take a look at this. This is, it's just not acceptable. And I, I can't look at parents with a straight face and say, there's a positive outcome coming, because I can't do that. I can't say that when I'm in a classroom and I see a teacher that doesn't understand in regard, you know, I, I understand very well. I, I love and support all of our teachers and our principals, but at some point, we all have to, as adults, make a decision that we're here to educate students, and if there's a, if a child is having an issue and you can't handle it, then you need to pass it off to someone else instead of sending them to the office or sending them home, or you know what, we need to get this kid out here, we're going to work with the family to send him somewhere else. I just, this is something for me, and looking at these numbers, I mean, I'm, I'm hopeful that the next set of numbers is going to be lower, and we're going to see some, some changes that we've been made, but honestly, I'm not ashamed of any of this work that we're doing, but looking at this, I am ashamed right now. And I can't look at those parents. I have a young man who, his mom reached out to me on Facebook and said, I'm having an issue at a school, no one's going to listen to me. You know what? We're going to listen, you have to, you have to let us know, but that shouldn't be the case. You know, our, our young men and, and our young women, quite honestly, they're, they're not being prepared because they're spending all of their time in detention, suspended, switching schools. We, I, I just, this is something we should all be as passionate about as we are anything else that we're doing. This is not acceptable, and Mr. Evans and I will be presenting at the next African-American Leadership Conference, and this is, these are the questions that they're asking. What are you doing? Look at these numbers. And I can't, I can't sit here and, and say, well, it's going to get better, because it's going to get better doesn't mean anything to that parent that they have a 11th grade student, and that's not going to be at their school, and, you know, this right here for me is we're failing these kids. And I just, I have to, I have to say it, I'm not going to sit here and pretend like I'm okay with all of this, because I'm not okay with it at all. And for me, I live in, in a district, I work in a district, I serve a district that is high minority population, I live in North O, I'm proud to live in North O, but this is why our parents are angry. This is why our parents don't have trust in our district. This is why the parents are angry, and they don't know who else to come to. So if they call Mr. Lee, it's not Mr. Lee specifically, but trust and believe, we know Mr. Lee is getting chewed out, and he's hearing all of that, and he's got to sit and grin and bear it. But at some point, we need every leader in this district to say enough is enough. It does, it shouldn't matter what differences that we have, but I can't sit and just continue to let this trend go. I mean, and we've seen every, on every one of these slides, especially for our African-American students, they're at the highest on every one of these lists, or they've increased, and it shouldn't be acceptable. We're talking about strategic plan, and we need to all do that, but you know what? What good is a strategic plan if we're not able to teach the kids because they're suspended, or they're not being focused on, or they're not being helped, or you know what? Because most of those problems aren't, a student is, is a bad kid, the student has some issues that we're not addressing, and I'm, I'm happy that the social worker, social workers are coming and they're going to help that, but the onus is on us as a district to get these numbers down, and... And I'm kind of to the point that I, there's no, there's no more excuses. And we need to see this in the, in these buildings from elementary to middle to high school. And for me, this is probably going to be one of those issues that I'm not going to back down on. I know Mr. Snow has said that, Mr. Wayne has said that, but at, at some point, when these numbers continue to grow and grow, and we sit and talk about how, all the great things we're doing here, but all of those great things we're doing are negated when we look at these, at this data. So I just want to, and it's not, they're presenters at all, because I applaud that you are making that difference in your buildings, and you're making difference. Sharif, I've, I've worked with you a long time, and I've seen you in those classrooms, I've seen you work with Minnesota Humanities, I've seen you doing your part, but every one of us at this table, every adult in this district, needs to be looking at these type of things and making a difference for kids. I, I just had to say it, and, and I pray that with, with all of the new things we're doing, but even without that, we just need to be teaching our staff how to work with our students a little bit better, and, and, and sending them to the office is not always the answer. Suspending them from school is not always the answer. And when the parents come and they storm this castle, I don't know what to, I don't know what to, what to say to them. I can't tell them anything, but come and let your voice be heard, because that's where, that's where this is. So again, it's not about you, it's not necessarily about us at this table, but it's a conversation that everybody should be engaging at their school buildings, at home, in their communities. This is the next wave of controversy that's really going to come. It's already here, but it's going to bubble out of control very soon, so.
All right, does anyone in? Any, oh, Ms. America, sorry.
First, I want to say yes to everything that Ms. Yeo just said, because I know, looking through the numbers in this presentation this afternoon, I was like, are, are you kidding me? We are making these changes, and this is still going on, this is still happening. And if there's anyone in our district that is okay with those numbers, you shouldn't be here. I'm sorry, but you shouldn't be here if you're okay with that. That being said, I have a couple of questions, Scott, that I'm hoping you can get some data, you know, I love my data. One of these actually comes from a conversation that we had at the last Council of Great City Schools meeting in DC, where we were meeting with some representatives from OCR, and talking about expulsion data, and the fact that there are federal requirements for certain things that we have no choice. We can't look at the circumstance, we can't look at the student, we have to do an expulsion. Is there a way to get a breakdown of our expulsions? What ones we have no option, we're required to do it, under those, I don't know if it's law, regulation, wherever it's coming from? Because that was a lot of school districts were talking about that, and the fact that our hands are kind of tied on a percentage of our expulsions, and they won't let us do anything with those students. Related to that, I would really like to know, because like if a student, from reading the latest code of conduct, if a student has like a semester expulsion, they have to be reassigned. It says in our code of conduct, they can't go back to their home school, or the school that they were at. So I think it'd be interesting, of that reassignment, what percentage of that is because a student had an expulsion, and our policies are making them be reassigned? So if you could get that to Mr. Ray, that'd be awesome.
Mr. Wayne?
The only one that's federally required is when you, when somebody, a student's caught with a gun, everything else is optional.
I'm aware of that, but I'd still like our board to have a breakdown of what.
Well, I would hope that if students have guns, we would know how many students or who, or a student got expelled because they brought a gun to school. And there's only been a few that didn't happen at school, maybe on a bus, or a transfer, or something like that, but I just, that number's not going to be very high. If, if, if over three, I'd be surprised.
Mr. Ray?
So Mr. Schmidt, Bonnie, to follow up with Ms. America's question, this, in your data, the students that are expelled are considered expelled, but when they're placed into another school from an expulsion, they're not considered a reassignment? So you're, they're two different groups? So you're, you're not including the kids that are placed into a different high school after an expulsion as a reassignment?
I believe you're right, but let me double check to make sure that's the case.
So there's the kids that are expelled, and then there's the kids that are reassigned, they're not the same?
Correct.
You all came to the table to share with us what you're doing, so we're anxious to hear from you, and we know that you're working hard, and so, so we'll turn it over to you, and I don't know who's leading you off. But you'll have to turn on your mic, I'm not sure if it's on. You're funny.
We, well, let me just say one thing as well about the suspensions. I know in, at Benson West, and I've been at King Science, we looked at our data in particular, and less than 1% was what we were looking at as far as suspensions, and those were repeat offenders. So we were at probably about 7% or 8% that were taking up probably about 90% of our day that were suspended over and over and over again, which constituted for a lot of our suspensions in our building. I just thought that might be helpful as well. Does, it's not, you know, yes, yes. We, Betsy and I are here just to share a little bit about our partnerships with Minnesota Humanities, and I would really just like to tell you a quick story. I was struggling with a kindergarten and a first grade, they were both male students at Benson West, and I, we were calling home every single day, they were, you know, locking themselves in lockers, kicking, scratching, biting, on a day-to-day basis for several hours. And we were trying to contact the family over and over, Meg, the assistant principal and I, without a lot of luck, but we finally were able to have a big sit-down meeting with both parents and with Meg and myself. And it was a really, really great meeting where there was, we got to the point of a lot of vulnerability, vulnerability in the, the conversation. And I had asked the dad simply if, I clarified for him first, I said, listen, I am not calling you because I'm judging you or because you're in trouble. I am calling you because I need your help. And he looked at me, and he said, look at me, look at me, do you really think that people want me in your building? I said, I want you in my building. And he had been, the year before, incarcerated, and just had, you know, a cer, I was desperate, I, I'm not into looks, I just wanted some help. And so he had some tear drops and some things on his body that he felt like, you know, people would judge him when he walked into the building. And so at the end of the conversation, he kind of seemed like he would be coming back to the building, and the next day, he showed up to the building, and I was so excited. I had sprained a knee, fell out of my little chair, that's what new principals do, and I was trying to get, go, take him to the two classrooms, the kindergarten and first grade classroom, to just check in, have him to be visible in the building. And so he's really tall, and I was trying to keep up with him to get to the classroom before we got down, just so I could say to the teacher, hey, this is such and such a dad. Well, I couldn't really keep up with him. Got to the first classroom, things were okay, he hugged on his son, loved on him. We went to the second classroom, there were two teachers in the classroom, and again, he arrived prior to me. When he got in the classroom, one of the teachers unfortunately was alarmed, and so her jaw dropped. And from that point on, that dad didn't come back into the building. And to show how, how much that disturbed him, he wouldn't even come through like the glass doors where there, there's just a bench. He would stand outside, poke his head in, and ask for his kids to come out. And so when we started our year this year, we looked at, wow, we've, we've had great results from scores, but we really going to have a hard time going any further without our parents. So we decided we needed some help with engaging our parents. We have a PTA that's about five-deep, and we have about 630 kids at Benson West. This year, we'll probably have about 605, so that's a, you know, pretty large elementary building. And so I contacted Minnesota Humanities and just kind of talked to them about what we were hoping to do. And, and the idea that we kind of came up with is, the more we can engage kids, the less behavior that we'll see. But in order to do that, we also have to have good relationships with our families. And so we started out with, Minnesota Humanities gives you the option to write a grant, and so we got a couple of teachers on a committee, and the grant is $2,000, and they were very, very liberal with us, because we went way over our $2,000 budget. I don't know about Betsy. But we started with this idea of a parent's story circle, which was a wonderful experience, and I'm going to come back to that dad in just a minute. This was for parents, the option to come and sit down, and for them to get to know one another, right? And so what we wanted to do is build that camaraderie so that they had some trust. There were three sessions of this. The first one was parents alone, the second two were with teachers and administration. But our job was to just listen to the parents. What happened with the three sessions is we found out that all of us in the room wanted the same things. We wanted longer recess, we wanted more substitutes, we wanted less bullying. And so it was amazing, because without a lot of engagement, it kind of feels like when parents come to the buildings for teachers, it's, you just don't know what you're going to get. And parents are feeling a little overwhelmed with coming to the buildings as well. So this was a nice setting, because we figured out, we all want the same things. So we started with a parent's story circle, and just, this was one of the survey questions that Sharif had mentioned. Tara Luna does all of the research for us as buildings, and so they come in and administer these surveys. For this one, they administer it to a parent, and there were just a couple that I wanted you to see. There, there wasn't tension between anyone, which was really huge, because that says parents and teachers both know there's tension when parents and teachers get together. Third from the bottom, in the bottom, more open and honest conversations, which is very telling, again, about the conversations that families and schools are having. This was another question on the survey, what reactions are you having, or did you have to the stories you heard? Very pleased, there were, there was a lot of crying, a lot of understanding, a lot of acceptance among a group that we thought was just really, really different. And we kind of stretched our funds, and we had two other events. I have to tell you about one of our parents, though, that was on this, this parent circle. She was the shyest parent that we had ever seen. She came in, she did this, she did not speak a word. After this, three sessions of the story circle, she was, she felt so empowered that she emailed Mr. Evans to say, what's going on with our substitutes in the district? And she was so proud, she came in and she was like, Dr. Green, I emailed Mr. Evans. And I was like, oh, okay, what was that about? But, but when I, when I walked away from that, I thought, how powerful to start with a group of five-deep PTA supporting 630 kids, and one of them was not verbal, and all of a sudden, she felt empowered to speak up for the kids at Benson West. So we went on, we, Jaquela is, was our speaker for Muffins for Mom, we had two events. And these events are, you know, they're fun and schools do them, but what Minnesota adds is money, and they add accountability, because they're, they're the next week to check in with me. How many, how many showed up for your event? What do you feel like the out, the outcome of the event was? So we had two, we had a Muffins for Moms, which was the Friday before Mother's Day at 7:15. You can see in the top picture, that many moms came out at 7:15 with their daughters, had breakfast, and listened to Jaquela, who spoke to them about having a vision for themselves and for their kids. The other one that we had was very, this one was first, the Donuts for Dads was really powerful. Minnesota Humanities offers great motivational speakers like Dr. Watson, and they foot the bill for all of that, so it's not a lot of stress for us as principals on how we fund these types of events. But that dad that I spoke about earlier, he did not come back to our building until this event, which was probably in April. And the incident that had happened was early in the school year. Now, we were recruiting heavily for these events, like I was putting kids in cars, talking, and so when I would see that dad drive up to the building, I would run out and try to engage with him and say, hey, we're having this event, we got a speaker coming in, he's African-American, please come, please come, please come. And he kept saying, yeah, we'll see, I might come. And so what happened that was wonderful is that he shows up to this event, he then connects with Dr. Watson after the event, and Dr. Watson sends him back to me. So Dr. Watson says at the end of this event, he said, okay, fathers, here's what I want you to do. I want you to get involved in your school. And of course, we had papers to sign on the dotted line. Can you read for Read to Success Week? Can you do this? Can you do that? So we were catching those dads just as they were in the building. But it meant more for this dad to hear Mr. Watson's story, who was similar to his, and Mr. Watson say, go back to your principal and connect with her, and connect with the kids in the building. And so from there, this was the most powerful thing that I think happened this year at Benson West, is Dr. Watson challenged our fathers to just show up, which is what we wanted. We just wanted dads to show up. So he said to them, dads, on a Friday morning, we used to have dads just showing up as kids were getting off the bus to greet them. So I took that idea and ran with it, did a robo-call. This Friday is the first day for DAP with dads. I didn't even know what a DAP was until the Donuts for Dad. And so this was the first day, this was the second Friday, we did it every Friday, that these dads just randomly showed up about 8:20, and they stood just before kids were getting dropped off at the bus, and they were there to just high-five the kids, and if you could just see the looks of their faces when they got off the bus, like, hey, what's this? And then they would just run and just jump like they were, you know, the new NFL draft or whatever. And one that I just want to share with you before Betsy takes over is one kid left home, said goodbye to his dad, got on the bus, came to school, and when he got off this bus, his dad was standing there to greet him, and he didn't tell him. You know, and just to see the look of how the kids feel, just to have somebody to say good morning was just wonderful. And these dads, you know, we had donuts for them, and we were like, yeah, you're doing it, giving them all of the strokes we could do, and but it was just a way for us to connect, because we do realize that we cannot do it by ourselves, and we have to have our families to come to the buildings to help us. We have to have them engaged and involved, because they're the experts on their kids. So that's kind of what we did with Benson West, I think that's my last slide. We did some other couple of things, just because we felt so excited about getting parents engaged, that we just ran with it.
Okay, we're going to switch places. Thank you, Monica. I'm Betsy Kush, I'm over at Jocelyn Elementary School, and just like Monica said, we can't do it alone. So part of our journey with Minnesota Humanities, we are also a partner school, this was our first year. One of our biggest things was our climate survey came back, and as I put that out there to staff, it was in the negative, and not just 5, 10%, it was over 11%. And the category it was in was showing respect, and what the students were feeling regardless of their race or ethnicity from adults in the building. And so, you know, that spreads across your staff, and you're, you're, all of a sudden, that's a heart thing, and pulling on your heartstrings, and is a true adult self-evaluation. And so through Dr. Coleman, my mentor, Mr. Crumley, some work we did over the summer, meeting together, and then Jocelyn coming on board as a partner school, because, right, just as we can't do it alone, we can't also as a school do it alone. So the Minnesota Humanities, through our journey, you know, we as schools, as we look at increasing engagement and building these relationships and partnerships, you know, we look at, everybody has a story. So our school has a story, all the schools in OPS have a story, all of our students have a story, and all of our parents have a story. And Jocelyn included, self-admittedly, we do a great job of having pizza nights, and having the pancake night, and bringing parents in, which is great, but we want to go deeper, and we want to go farther with that. And a lot of times, again, self-admittedly, we're pushing our agenda, and the schools are, you know, setting this up, and it's very one-sided. So what we wanted to do was create opportunities where parents could come in, and part of that night, and we gave these presentations at the Minnesota, for the Principals Institute as well, for Minnesota Humanities, and we talked about, even if you're not a partner school, you can still take and do these activities, and even the family nights, and still create these opportunities for families to tell their story. So our school first, excuse me, created a team, we worked collaboratively with the PTO, and ours was, a lot of our funding went towards this grand, then culminating event. And so we created all kinds of different areas and venues, and if you see up in the right, our big piece was, parents signed up, we had two sessions, we actually had more families that wanted to do it than we were able to hold or have enough places for. And so that was great, that we got this enormous turnout, that, and the piece was, where, that was where families could come in, and they created on canvas, they were walked through a series of questions and events. on canvas, they were walked through a series of questions and events that they came in and they created this canvas together. And at the end, they told their story and shared with all of the other families and including staff members that were there as well. And so, we offered, we had a jazz band, a local jazz band, we had families brought in, a soup that was either a tradition for their family or a family favorite. In the middle, you'll see a mom and her son that created that canvas, that were able to share their story. We had the chorus, we had an open mic. Every student had at least one, if not two, pieces of artwork up. Also, the Jocelyn came to us, so we had, we had Jocelyn at the Jocelyn. We had three, three generations of family sharing in this picture, just together, just again, we picked art as their way that they would share and talk with each other. All four met family members, some of the families put them in quadrants, some of them made them together. I gave this presentation, or we've talked a few times to different groups, and I've tried to collect back one of those canvases and how important they are. Our grandfather, I mean, would not, he trusted me and he said, I'm just sorry, Mrs. Kush, I just, if I take that off, my granddaughter will be devastated because it's above our fireplace. And it's that important to our family. So just talking about, every family has a story. Getting your staff, getting your community, getting your teachers and getting everyone from in-your-kitchen staff to your custodial staff, to your library staff, you know, thinking about that, how wow, every family has a story. Again, Tara Luna, we created a survey that was in that session and we collected the data from that, just asking about that connectedness that they felt towards the school. Huge, powerful things that we found out. And as a staff, as we came back together, families did feel more connected after they came together for this event. But very powerful, families that you see often or you think, oh, I, you know, they've checked in their kid every day or picked them up. They sometimes actually, they put on the survey, they really didn't feel connected. But after event, like, events like this, that helped build, reinforce and unite our families. I shared with the principals also that it's a lot of dads that came at first were, I'm probably not gonna talk, so a lot of them, that survey, that part about, they were very uncomfortable to speak, actually then turned out being the family spokesman, you know, or spokesperson for their families and shared. I mean, it was just so great for, pretty soon, those conversations led into teachers and parents and families just sitting down and having big conversations. So what's next? We wanna keep making sure that we're doing a celebration of every family has a story and keeping that embedded in all of the events that we do. Making this Arts Night an annual event, just changing that up. Keep building relationships and making connections a center of focus. I met with my PTO, for example, this summer, but even, just went back to, what is our true mission here? When we sit around and we start talking about, how much money are we gonna make or how, who's working this or who's doing that? Going back to, wait a minute, what's the true and ultimate goal and meaning that we're trying to get out of this? And how are we building and focusing on building those relationships and connection with our families? And then, increase the opportunity within our events for families to talk and for them to give feedback and share their story. One other thing that we did, we, as a staff, did the story circles and did the absent narratives and the, you know, the single story. But we also did, through Tommy Watson, I wanted to share, the legacy of a story. Crystal Simpson and I just really deepened our friendship this year, before her passing. We created through, with the help of Dr. Tommy Watson, Hope Groups. And that was Having Only Positive Expectations. And the groups of students, they worked on building and strengthening their relationships. Students to students, staff to staff, staff to student, and then the school to school. Because our group and her group would write each other letters so that the students also knew, we're not alone in this. And they became leaders in our school, even though as adults, we had selected carefully some of those students. And when Dr. Watson comes to speak to the schools, he's so powerful. And after he's done speaking, staff and students just naturally gravitate towards him. And so, some of those were the students that we selected. And so, again, those students then would come up with, well, how do we spread hope? And how, how do we have others feel hope? And they wanted to do care packages for parents, for teachers, notes on lockers, all of these. And then, each part though, they were given the opportunity at those meetings, they, ours met once, twice a week, they were given the opportunity to share their story. So this just continued. We were going to meet then, our school and Crystal's school. Our last meeting that we had, she passed before our schools were able to meet, Dr. Utterback, or Lisa Utterback had called and said, we stopped to make this happen. So when our school went to meet with Dodge, Crystal was seeing 26 students, not once, but faithfully twice a week. So when you talk about the power of a story and how that strategy of building positive relationships within, in her school meant so much. And when I shared that with my staff, they were just overwhelmed because here, we were seeing nine students. And we thought, this is pretty powerful. So then you see how powerful. So now, talking to other principals, we already have three or four that we're gonna connect it for sure, Monica and I in Benson West now, and we're also already connecting with Dodge. So now, school to school, we continue making these opportunities for students. And all of this is increasing engagement, it's increasing, building positive relationships and strengthening those within the school. And we're hoping then, that's gonna, you know, further, you know, go into that deeper understanding for our staff. Crystal and I, a lot of our lunches and conversations we had, I'll share with you, were about, how do we get everybody on board? And this isn't always met with, you know, lots of beautiful roses and, and looks, and it looks great and smells great. Because also, well, wait a minute, you're taking the students when? How long are they gonna meet? Who are they gonna talk to? What's the focus? Why do they gotta leave the room? You're met with all these things that sometimes catch you off-guard because you're going in a direction you want everybody to be going in, and definitely our students do. So thank you and thank you do, for inviting us tonight and for the Minnesota Humanities. And I know, to Sherwood for funding through that as well. All right, Mr. Lee.
I did not do PowerPoint, that's a beautiful job by you ladies. Here's my PowerPoint right here. So I'm coming totally opposite now, I'm coming to you from a high school standpoint. And I can tell you that, Ms. Williams, Ms. America, I, I hear what you're saying. And so, you have families that come up to you and you, and you cannot say to them that it will get better. Well, you can tell them it is getting better. And I can speak from experience. It is getting better. At Northwest, and these are my numbers by the way, okay? We, we went up in enrollment, but we went down 21% in referrals and we went down 5% in suspensions. Now, you can, better jot that down, make sure I'm right. But we feel good about the direction we're going. And, and trust me, I can only speak for Northwest right now. However, I will also tell you this, this district is fortunate that they have seven high school principals. If you count Blackburn Career Center, nine high school principals that work well together and communicate, big difference. And we do talk and we do communicate. I will also tell you, I think the reassignment numbers are up because expulsions are down. The reason expulsions are down, because the principals are communicating and we're willing to give kids a fresh start in another building. Sometimes everybody looks at that as being a negative, a reassignment, it's not always meant to be a negative. We talk to each other and we say, you know, can you take such and such because I just really feel that here, she needs a new start somewhere, having some trouble here with students. It happens. And we did it. So, those reassignment numbers could be a little spiked based upon what the reasoning really is. And I also sat on the reassignment team this year. And so, I can tell you, here's what I see. Social media is destroying our young people, okay? We have young people who are experiencing a lot of mental health issues. It really is a real thing. And I didn't know it at first either, but I'm telling you, each year, I'm learning more and more about it. I can tell you that the lack of connections and being engaged in school really hinders our young people and creates behavior problems. And then the lack of parental involvement. Now, let me tell you, I'm in high school, parental involvement's a little different at a high school level. Because their kids can drive to school or drive to the, the game or drive to the play production, the musical, whatever it is. See, and the parent doesn't have to drive the kids. And so, a lot of times, or they'll ride with their friends. So a lot of times, the parents aren't involved as we want them to. But they are, it's kinda, you know, they're with them through their elementary school years, they really are. I was. They get to middle school, you're still there and then you get to high school. And I tell you what, when my girls got that car, I said, get after it. I, you know? And that wasn't because I didn't love them or care about them or support them. That's just what happens. So, you know, my oldest daughter, of course, she went to Central and I was at Central, so that was different. Excuse me, my middle daughter, my oldest daughter wanted nothing to do with that at school, let me back that up. I was north of time, she went, she went to Central. And then my other daughter, she came with me and my son, you know, he's at Burke. So, you know, but, so I'm not at Burke all the time, that doesn't mean I don't support my son, okay? So, I just wanna say, you know what I think? Here's what's happening in Northwest. We are not looking at this as a negative, this is a positive. We have to take the positive approach. So we have gone to, what can we do to get our young people engaged in high school? The first goal that we set, and we set this my first year, going up, this is now gonna be year three for me, it feels like 33, but it's year three. My first year, we said, we want every student to be involved in an activity. We have clubs, we have activities and we have athletics. Now, obviously, we don't have 100% participation, but I'm telling you, the numbers went way up. Our numbers skyrocketed in athletics and we had to buy some more equipment, still need some help with that. We had to buy some more equipment, I can put my plugs in when I can, since I got the mic. We had, and we had to borrow some equipment. But you know what? That's a good thing. Cause that tells me that participation is up. That's a big step. We want our kids to be involved, okay? We had a school-based health center in our school, we don't call it school-based health center. For us, it is a health and wellness center. We are, we've changed the name and we are working together to attack the mental health issues that our young people are facing and seeing. It is a great partnership with Charles Drew. It's so great that, you know, Northwest is fortunate to be under renovation and we are, they are building the nurse's office onto the health and wellness center. So you have an entrance to the health and wellness center, you have an entrance to the nurse's office, and they work hand in hand. We are serious about working with the mental health of our young people, let alone the physical health. Our Wellness Committee is at the top of its game. A lot of people just say they have a Wellness Committee. Now, we have a Wellness Committee that works. And we have a Student Wellness Committee called Healthy Huskies that works and brings up and provides opportunities and ideals for our young people to be involved. The most recent and newest one was our Healthy Huskies had the first annual Northwest Color Run. That was a great event. Closed off Crown Point and Winning Hof. And, you know, we had a great time. So these are the things that we're doing to get our kids connected with school. Don't misinterpret, academics is at the top of the game. I don't even need to talk about academics because we already know that's what we're in school for. So I'm talking about the things to get the kids connected to school that'll, that'll allow them to come to school. Our goal with the Health and Wellness Center is 100% attendance, 100% graduation rate. Now, everybody will say, you can't reach 100%. Well, you know what? I'm gonna try. Cause I'm not gonna set the goal at 90%. That's, why would I just set it at 90%? So when I get to 90%, we're, we're done, we're good enough, not, not good enough for me. We, we set the goal at 100%. And we're trying to get to 100%. So I can tell you, one of the things we're doing this year for the first time, we're running a pilot program of our 400 seniors right now. We identified 68 who are borderline. When I say borderline, I, 34 of them really are going to probably have no problem, 34 are going to need extra attention. But we, I took all 68 and myself and the assistant, three assistant principals, we all have 17 seniors that we are responsible for and we are to meet with them weekly. And the assistant principals have to give me their call, their log of when they met with their students, cause we're going to be serious about this. And so, this is just a pilot program because the goal going forward, and it'll probably take us at least two years, but every adult in that building is going to be responsible for seven to eight kids. And they're gonna be responsible for meeting with those students regularly, okay? So that's the direction we're going. I'm a big believer, if you don't touch the student, then they get lost, okay? And we have a lot of young people out there who are hurting and they need to be touched by an adult. And so, we discuss this and we talk about this in our PLCs. I have a great staff, by the way. Never complain about PLCs unless, I don't, if they do, they haven't told me. I think we have great PLCs. This year, MTSSB is our focus with our PLCs. And we're doing a book study with our PLCs, reading Engaging with Poverty in Mind by Eric Jensen. That is a book that they've chosen. And we are going to study as a group, as a staff, on how we can be better for our students. Let me tell you what else is, is big for us. When I came into Northwest, I didn't feel like we were connected with our partnerships. I thought they were just there, it was just throwing another program at Northwest. Well, I had the opportunity to meet with all of our partnerships. So, and now someone in that building, one adult, whether it's a dean or assistant principal, is responsible for connecting with the following, College Possible, Avenue Scholars, Partnership for Kids, Urban League, Teammates, okay? I had a staff member meet with me this morning who wants to bring Impact One in. I have to learn more about that before we go forward, but you know, that's the kinda staff I have. They want to bring programs in to help our young people and work with them. So we'll be looking at that as well. I can tell you that mentoring is becoming a big thing in our school. We have the Teammates Mentoring Program. This year, we are including now the inclusive communities, which will touch about 40 students, I believe, or so. And then we have started a mentorship with North Star, which will touch 14 of our students year-long on leadership and just behavior, whatever it is. And trust me, these are not our kids with the 3.0s, you know, or above. These are kids who need the extra attention. But we do not forget about the students who are excelling and doing well. Cause if you put all your focus on that, you're gonna lose those kids as well. So you have to make sure you're touching all of your students. We're changing our advisement this year. To me, advisement was just a playtime at Northwest, it's no longer playtime. We have four lunch periods now, 45 minutes each for lunch, that's too long. So the first 20 minutes, 15 minutes, they are with an advisor as a group, okay? So there'd be 25 to 28 students in a group, they meet for 15 minutes, they get to discuss. That is gonna be the opportunity to advise, to really advise and discuss, what's going on in your life? Are there problems? It's going to be, for lack of better terms right now, a therapy for that group of students to work together. And then, of course, then the last 30 minutes, they go to the lunchroom. And we eat lunch together and we learn to communicate and get along with everybody. We do stress in our building and I love our building because it is very diverse. But you know what? We, we talk about working together and getting along as a community of students. I've already mentioned PLCs. I think that's big because it's about the staff. And as the staff grows and gets better, so do our students. As the staff culture changes, so does the culture of our building. We are about being positive. We are about, when you walk in the doors, hopefully you feel good when you walk in and you feel like something good is happening and taking place in our building because we feel that it is. One of the things we're adding, and, and this is just communication with Ruben Connell from South High, we're adding Saturday School this year as well at Northwest, to where students can come and get extra help. There's tutorial that will go on, there'll be opportunity to work on scholarships, there'll be opportunity to work on their senior projects. It's just another opportunity for our students to be at school, receiving some help and wherever they need it. It's another positive opportunity. I'm truly excited about MTSSB. The staff ran with it when they were assigned, not assigned, excuse me, they volunteered. When they volunteered to be on that committee, they ran with it. And I mean, they are running and they are loving it and enjoying it. I can tell you that coaching has been a big piece because now we're putting more adults in the classroom. So coaching with our leadership team has been very beneficial. Now, I know a lot of times, people were just saying they didn't have the time and, and I was one of them, didn't have the time. But really, a lot of times, I was coaching, didn't even realize it. I tell Mrs. Coleman all the time, you know, I go in the classroom all the time, after passing period, I walk in three or four or five rooms. I just forget to put in a coaching note. But I'm coaching and I'm in the classroom and that's what we do. And that's what all of the leadership team is expected to do is after hall duty, you gotta duck into two or three rooms. The students need to see you and they need to see your face, you need to be positive and encouraging. I, I don't know, the biggest thing now for us is recognizing our students. This is big this year. We're moving to quarterly recognitions. A lot of times, we do semester, we do at the end of the year, we do quarterly. But I can tell you that when you recognize students, they love it. So last year was the first year we had Student of the Month, loved it. We honored one freshman female, one freshman male and so on, sophomore, junior, senior. Their parents come for breakfast, the teacher that nominates them comes to the breakfast. You want some parental involvement, have some breakfast. They like to come for breakfast. They like to come for breakfast. And, but you know what? It really, it made some kids cry when they were recognized, yeah? That one girl, baby girl, I love her to death, she drives you nuts. But you know what? She earned it, and she cried. And she, you know, I say that to her too, because they're high school, and they can handle it, and we have good conversations. I love my job, I love my kids. And I tell my staff, "Don't do as I do." Because what I do could probably cost me not to see a contract. Because I hug my kids, male and female. That's just me. I could do that. Been doing this for a long time. A lot of these kids I know, a lot of these kids, I was not much older than my students when I started, so all these kids, I got kids my son's age, just blows me away. But I have a few that are at Northwest right now. So I can get away with that, because those kids know that it's like Big Poppers to them. I'm Big Papa. I just, I love my kids, my students, and I want to see them be successful and to do well. So we do recognize our students for improvement in behavior and attendance and their academics. We brought back the Paw Squad. Mr. Wayne might remember that. We brought that back, because we need school pride. We didn't have a lot of school pride at Northwest there for a while, and so we're bringing that back. One of the other things that we're looking at doing, at our freshman level, we're looking at adding practicum experiences to their education. When you get to be a sophomore, it'll be service learning projects. When you get to be a junior, it'll be community service projects. And when you get to be a senior, it'll be an internship. So we're looking at building that into our curriculum. And then, last but not least, and I say this for last, because I took about an eight-week beating on this one. I dismantled our athletic boosters, our fine arts parents, and our PTSO. Because it was the same people doing the same work, and I said, "No more of that." We're going to come together as one parent organization that represents all the students in this high school, and all of our parents are going to come together and work together. And they beat me up, said it wasn't going to work. I'm here to tell you, I can't wait till our meeting tomorrow night, because they are on cloud nine, flying high, didn't think it would work, and now they can't stop smiling. They're tweeting about it, man, they're having a great time. And that's what you need to do to get your parents involved in high school. I believe, and I'm going to say it again, I truly believe when you say, "We need kids that look like us in front of us." And we're not just talking African-American, we're talking Hispanic, we're talking Native American, we're talking Sudanese, we're talking everybody. I get that. That's why I love Northwest, because we are well-represented on the staff. This district has been very supportive of Northwest. This district has been supportive of all of our schools. I know that, but I can speak for Northwest, because that's where I'm at. But I know this district has been supportive of Northwest, and I know Northwest is moving forward, and I know that things are going to get better. I have no problem telling parents when they ask me, "You know what else we're doing? We're bringing kids back." We are making an effort to bring kids back. We have a magnet facilitator that does, Mr. Plunder was left, we've hired a new lady, but they do great work. Brought a kid back from West Side yesterday. I love it when the kids come back from Miller North. I'm proud of that. They might have left, but we're about to get them back, and we're trying to keep our kids here. We know we're talking about building another high school out in West Omaha. I don't have a problem with that. My job right now is to bring kids back and get kids into Northwest and into Omaha Public Schools and to believe in what we're doing. Because I believe that what we're doing is good things, and I believe we've come a long ways, and we're doing great things. We are a lot for the law that people want to say. And I'm telling you, right now, I take classes, I'm in school, and so I'm in classes with people from out west, small towns, big schools, small schools. But let me tell you something, they've heard about Northwest, because we're spreading the word. Because I believe in doing that. And I believe in what we're doing with our magnet program, it's growing like crazy. It is a great program for our students. And Northwest is a very comprehensive high school, so every student has something they can be a part of. So I'm here to tell you, say it, it's going to change.
Well, if anyone's interested in a weight loss program, I would suggest following Mr. Lee around for a day. And, you know, so I get to hear it, because I live in an area that, you know, is both Northwest and Burke, and all the positive things I hear, whether I'm at Baker's talking to the checkout guy who I knew from elementary school that's at Northwest now, or a parent at the pool. Everybody's so excited about what's going on. And I want to thank you for some of the things that you brought up, especially the reassignment piece, which I hadn't really thought about, but I know, I do have parents that call and say, "Really, really concerned, my child's in with the wrong crowd. What should happen?" And there are times when I've said, "Hey, you need, as a parent, to decide. Is that the right place for your child to be because of the crowd that the student is with? Do they need a fresh start? Do they need to start over?" So I do appreciate that, because sometimes, that's exactly what that student needs. So I think after hearing the three of you speak, wow, how exciting. And how do, you know, how can you all spread that contagious? And I know you are, and I know that it's happening with the principals' groups and everything else. So we appreciate that.
No, that's what I was going to say. I forgot that. The principals' professional learning communities is going to be another positive thing. We're excited about that already. We've been emailing our little PPLC. We've been emailing each other. I'm in there with Burke and Beveridge and Morton and Davis. And we're having a great time already, and a lot of communication already. And that's exactly what's going to happen, and that's how we're going to spread the word to our peers.
Yeah, great, great things are happening, and Northwest even won a baseball tournament this summer. You all did really, really well. That was very impressive. Heard all about it from all the kids from the other schools. So anyway, thank you so much. And I do think that it was really good to have your information after the information we just got, because we're seeing that a difference can be made. And when I think about the engagement and that aspect of it, I think about what's really important for engaging families is to get them involved. And it's hard at the high school level, but I'm hearing from students and parents at the high school level, especially at Northwest, that that is happening. I know you took a beating on your breakup, but I think, I think you clearly did the right thing, and it's going to be an awesome experience for the students there. So Ms. Williams.
Well, first, let me thank all three of you for your passion and your commitment to students. And it shows in just coming and presenting what you're doing at your schools. And those are the things that we need to see more of, and our community needs to see more of. However, I will say, not to, I love Mr. Lee, and, you know, my daughter's still mad at you, just for the record, that you left her at Central, just saying. But this is, this is where, yeah, this is where, she'll be texting you later. But this is where we need to see this duplicated across our district. And I'm not saying that we're not making progress. We absolutely are. And our three years on this, my three years on this board are three years and a month. We are farther than we have been in all the time that I've been a parent in the district, and that's exciting. But there's also, you know, just that air of, that culture change that we need to get over. We're stagnant in a lot of places. And you know what? Sometimes it's that one or two staff members in your, in buildings, that they can't be open to the change. And the unfortunate reality of it is, and it doesn't matter what you do, it doesn't matter if you're the engineer, or the principal, or the teacher, or there's just, that's just the nature of education and the world we live in. But I, but I hope that, you know, it's, my expression isn't, "We're not doing positive things." We are. But we need some more change, and we need to see those in those buildings. And you are evident, and there's so many more principals and staff and teachers out there that are doing what you are all doing. But parents really, they're seeing at Northwest, they're seeing in Jocelyn, they're seeing at Benson West, but some schools are not seeing it, you know? And that's where, for me, that passion is, is those parents are coming, and they're crying, and they don't know what to do, and there's all these other things. And we really need to make this difference for our kids. Because I've been a firm believer, and I've said it for a long time, that every adult in this district is expendable if we're not doing what's right for kids, you know? And so that, for you, I want to applaud you publicly, Sharif, your work as well. I've, you know, I've got to work with you, Mr. Lee, so I will be out to both of your buildings to see some amazing things that you're doing. But if you have that chance, spread that passion with someone not in your building. I mean, I, I just, this is the game changer for us, but if it's not spread across our district, we're not going to get those outcomes. You have outcomes because you go above and beyond. You love your job, you love what you do, you're about those kids. Mr. Lee, I know you're about those kids, because I've seen you, I've seen you speak to those kids, when a lot of folks, you know, they're only going to put on that show when there's an audience. But I've seen you do it with one-on-one, with the whole gym of kids, with the small group. I mean, those are the things that you all are doing that we need across our district. We need to, you've, you know, you said, you know, you work, you're working with your staff. Your staff is completely committed. It took some time, it didn't happen overnight, because when you first got there, they weren't all like, "Oh, yay, Mr. Lee." But look where they are now. And that's, that's what we need in our district, is we need every leader, whether, a leader doesn't have to be the administrator, whatever leader in that building, you could be that one staff that's been in that building 30 years, and you're truly the leader. We need every leader in our district to stand up. And to, these numbers, they're outrageous, just as a district. That's outrageous. And I'm still going to go back, we should be ashamed. We're making progress, yes, but we can't always say, "Yay, we're doing these great things," without saying, "Hey, this is an area that we know we need improvement." And none of us are going to stop doing this work until we see this change. So that really is my point. But I just want to thank you all. I've truly enjoyed, I want to come, I mean, I'm a DAP for Dads, I know how to DAP, I want to DAP too, I'm just saying, Dr. Green, so we got to talk about some stuff. But thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just, you're absolutely right when you talk about engagement, and so thank you for the engagement you're doing with the students. Mr. Evans.
I didn't want him to get away from the table before I thanked him personally, and also just to make the, everybody here aware, Monica is here, actually, she's supposed to be on vacation, but I want you to give your thoughts and prayers for her school family, for the last one of her students, sixth grader Prabish Ra drowned in a family vacation. And so that's why she's with us today, because she came back. And tomorrow, I believe, you're opening your building for kind of a student activity where they'll be signing cards for the family and multiple things. But we're thinking about you, and thinking about your school family, and your student family, and certainly Prabish's family too, so. But that's the kind of people we have. I'm glad you got to see the passion that I see all the time tonight, from three of our star principals. But I could tell you, I could put 10 more up there tomorrow night, and you'd see the same passion. They'd be just like Mr. Lee, just as excited as he was, because here's what happened two weeks ago. We had a retreat for two days with all of our principals, and guess who led a large part of the retreat? Principals. In fact, that's why I picked these three out, because I happened to go to their sessions where they were leading all the others, talking about exactly what you heard tonight, because